July 9, 2024. First order of business: I move that the Select Board go into Executive Session for the purpose of discussing strategy related to the Robert Crook versus Town of Brookline litigation matter. This litigation matter must be discussed in Executive Session because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town, and I, the Chair, so declare an Executive Session therefore to be necessary. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Schoyak?
Aye.
Michael Sandmann?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Pearlman?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. The Select Board will reconvene in open session following our Executive Session meeting. Thank you.
Regular meeting of the Select Board for July 9, 2024. Let's start off with any updates from the Select Board or announcements. I'd like to actually start with just a couple of historical facts that may be interesting to people. Today is the 200 or 156th anniversary of the 14th Amendment to the Constitution. It was ratified in 1868 granting citizenship and equal protection under the laws that anyone born or naturalized in the United States, including formerly enslaved people. My message to everyone in our broad TV audience is enjoy it while you have it and do whatever it takes to keep it. Yesterday was also a kind of related day, and that is it was Emancipation Day here in Massachusetts. And I think it's Emancipation Day is celebrated in Washington, DC. In Massachusetts, it's also known as Quok Walker Day to celebrate two cases in 1783 that ended legal support for slavery in the Commonwealth. The two cases were Quok Walker case and the Mum Bet case, who later changed her name to. Is celebrated in Philadelphia and not Boston because he escaped from Boston and indentured to his brother and went to Philadelphia. So a little bit of historical information that may be interesting to some people. It's interesting to me. Any rate, any other comments or updates from the Select Board? John?
At some risk, I'm going to mention something that I've already mentioned on social media. Because I think it's a good idea. And I hope the more people think about it, the more they'll think it's a good idea. And that is that the town is pursuing a project to solicit feedback from the public as to what is Brookline's, excuse the expression, brand? I think, you know, we ought to be used to the idea that things and people have a brand. We've been living with it for quite some time now. But what is Brookline's brand? And if one were to come up with a brand, what would it be? What would it be to a person from North Brookline? What would it be to a person from South Brookline? What would it be to a person visiting Brookline? The one thing that I was just discussing this briefly with Paul. The one thing we do know about Brookline is that when outside groups do surveys of some of the most desirable places to live in the United States, Brookline has a way of showing up and sometimes, you know, showing up near the top or if not at the top of the list. So there's some good things going on here, which we sometimes lose sight of. There's also a lot of complexities. It's not the town that it was when I first moved here in the 1970s. And in the 70s, it wasn't the town that it was in the 1900s. There's a lot of complexities. How do we reflect all that in a brand identity for Brookline? So there is a survey being conducted. If you go to the town website, you'll figure, you'll be able to figure out how to take part in the survey. It was surprising to me when I took the survey, how much, how hard I had to think about the questions. And I realized, you know, for all of the time I spend at these Select Board meetings and in other settings, thinking about Brookline and for all the times I have said, I really love living in Brookline. What is my sense of the virtues that make Brookline a town I really enjoy living in? So that's my, that's my pitch for people to take the survey. As I say, I sort of spread the word on social media for reasons that, you know, people can explain if they wish. A lot of people, you know, greeted this news with, with questions and with a little bit of cynicism. I would ask people to just suspend their, the, the, the easy and the cheap jokes that we could make about this for the, for the time being and take the survey. If you want to know why this might be a good exercise, take the survey. And then it'd be, I'm wide open to people who still want to criticize it once they've taken it.
Thank you, John. Paul?
I was gonna just chime in for a minute, and I appreciate John raising this issue. I was hoping Chaz could just speak briefly to this because this is an important initiative that we talked about at the offsite, the planning workshop and the importance of, you know, coming up with a clear message about Brookline so that we're defining who we are, not others. So anyway, I want to open, giving you the floor to have a chat.
I mean, you took the words out of my mouth. This is, it is a really wonderful opportunity for us. We've been very fortunate now that we have a communications officer in Christina Metcalf and Tiffany Oliva has joined us as ATA of Operations. We really have the opportunity here to be more strategic about how we present ourselves to the broader world. And that involves branding, that involves identities, brand marks, how we, even how we communicate over letterhead, how, you know, how, how we look to the outside world is very important in ensuring that the goals and objectives of the Select Board are met. And, you know, I mean, in order to communicate out to the world, for example, that Brookline is open for business and is willing and wants to be a major player in the municipal fields on these things and really wants to be at the vanguard of developments of things like sustainability. In order to message that out and make sure that we are, you know, reflecting, as John said, our stature as one of the most desirable places to live in the country. It's important that we have that identity here. And the value of this, the money for this, just so folks understand, is actually coming from the Select Board's office for consulting and outside services, which again, is not a large budget. We often spend that on things that are important like training and conferences. But this year, we had some money that we were able to spend on this project and we thought it was a worthwhile endeavor. We've been talking about doing it for years. We had the opportunity, we have the staff support. It's a great opportunity for us to do this. So thanks for the, thanks for the, the chance to speak.
Well, thank you for, for taking the initiative to get it done.
Okay, any other comments from the Select Board?
Really, really quick, sorry. I just want to do highlight and praise a really great operation and team that's been working through at the police department. Chief Pastor let me know on Monday, and I'm just really grateful for the whole team. We are not alone in other many communities. We've had individuals dealing with breaking and entering to mailboxes. But the entire team in consultation with the Postal Investigation Unit really did some incredible work in South Brookline in apprehending a suspect that was involved in potential multiple breaking and entering into mailboxes. Just a really excellent feat of coordination. Detective Shania Tori was involved in monitoring the situation and getting and identifying a suspect at 2:30 in the morning. There were two dispatchers, Alex Pullos and Gabe Lee, who really handled this with great aplomb, coordinating, making sure that everyone was present and able to do this. And then Sergeant Hammerso and Officers Ragovic and Canavan were there to make the arrest. They interviewed the suspect. So just very grateful, really a wonderful operation. So thanks to the chief for highlighting that and thanks to the whole team at the department. Just excellent work.
Thank you. Any? Okay, public comment. Tiffany, are you ready to lay out the rules?
Yes. Thank you for joining us for public comment. This is an opportunity for us to hear your perspective on the issues in Brookline that matter to you. Each person speaking tonight is limited to three minutes. You don't need to use the entire time, but you may if you like. Once 15 minutes has been met, there is an opportunity at the conclusion of the Select Board's business for additional comments. Members of the public sometimes raise questions during public comment. We may be able to provide a quick answer to a question, but are more likely to work with staff to get a more thorough answer and respond over email. We'll let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining and when your time is up. Please conclude your remarks at that time. If you have more to say, you are welcome to send an email to board members expressing your thoughts in greater detail. We did not have anyone sign up in advance, but I do believe Regina Farley signed up on that sheet in the room if she would like to make a comment.
Thank you. Regina Farley from Precinct 16. I'm wondering if at least the town administrator has heard about the governor's proposal for a municipal empowerment act. It has several components. I haven't had a chance to get the whole thing, but a brief summary I had seen included the enabling of communities to be able to increase the assistance or judgments they make about exemptions and increases of amounts for people to be able to live in their homes. So it is kind of dying in committee right now with the state and the reps. And I would request that this board send a letter and reach out to our state reps. We have multiples because that's how we're gerrymandered. And be able to see if you can push this forward. Thank you. And could you also add the closed captioning to the screen?
Thank you.
The closed captioning might be, need to be done from that computer in the room.
Yep, I've got it. Thank you. And I just want to thank you for that flag. We have been advocating at the local level for that municipal empowerment act in its various forms as it has been winding its way through the legislature. I'm hoping that it doesn't die in committee. I'm hoping that it gets through and we conference something out. I think as we get close to the contours of a final bill, obviously it is a priority for us. And we will make sure that, you know, if the Select Board agrees, that we can transmit a letter to the legislature before the end of the session, identifying both that priority and the many other priorities that are in there, including certain local option taxes that can be modified, increased, decreased, depending on the circumstances. So all of that is good. It is a very important bill. It's been a lot of, long road to get to where it is. I'm hoping it gets through.
Okay, we'll wait for Chaz to fix that problem. Or the problem of the captioning.
And then if there are no others in the room, that should be everyone for public comment.
Anyone else want to make a public comment? Seeing no one, we'll move on. Next, our miscellaneous. Next, our miscellaneous agenda, approval of miscellaneous items, licenses and contracts. I typically do this in omnibus fashion. However, there are one, two, three items on the agenda that was posted that we're going to take out. First, the Fidelity film proposal for Beacon Street has been withdrawn by the producers of that. Secondly, the Casella, Casilla contracts. There are two contracts, over a million dollars. We're going to discuss that separately, not in the miscellaneous category. And thirdly, there's an annual report submitted by the Brookline Emergency Preparedness Committee that we're also going to take out and discuss separately. It's a large report that includes some significant things that we'd like to discuss in more detail. But with that, with those changes, I would like to first move approval of the meeting minutes from June 25th, 2024. Any edits or corrections? Okay, and move approval, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyak?
Aye.
Michael Sammon?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Pearlman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next, the remaining items in our miscellaneous, on our miscellaneous calendar, I'd like to take in omnibus fashion with the adjustments I mentioned earlier. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyak?
Aye.
Michael, Michael Sammon?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Pearlman?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. So with that, let's go to, want to start with the Casella contracts?
Sure. So there are two Casella contracts on. These are renewals of contracts for waste management. One is for the disposal of solid waste that is non-recyclable. And that is not a contract for hauling. You can see from the listing there, that's not a contract for hauling from people's homes. That's the disposal of the waste from when it's collected and brought to our waste station to its final destination. Then there's the recycling portion of it, which is a contract for home pickup, which we have historically done. And that's the larger of the two contracts. Casella manages our recycling program and they also manage the waste removal program. Once it reaches the transfer station, they take it out of the town. So those are the two contracts that are up for your approval. And I do apologize, the Commissioner for Public Works is on vacation this week. So if there are additional questions that I can't answer, we're obviously happy to either hold as necessary or move through and make sure that you have an answer after this meeting.
Any questions? John?
Well, yeah, thank you very much for that explanation. I mean, the honest answer to what you just said is that I have some questions that I think could be answered by the DPW Commissioner, but maybe not by you. No offense.
I apologize.
No, that's okay. You don't, you can't know everything, right? And for that reason, if, if this doesn't have to be voted tonight, you know, I definitely would prefer that we hold it until we can just review. And if I may just explain a little bit, I, I, I don't ever like to, you know, obstruct progress. And this will be voted, I'm sure, as presented. But I, I can't waste this opportunity to just open the door on a few questions that a lot of people have these days about the future of recycling and whether in fact, at some point, we're going to have to transition to a different kind of a recycling. A phrase that you hear often these days is toxicity of the waste stream, which has to do with plastics in the waste stream. And there's a growing body of opinion that the, the only true solution to the problem of toxic plastics in the waste stream isn't recycling. It's to get them, you know, to not have them be manufactured and produced in the first place. So that's just an example of the kind of question that I think is extremely significant in this time of trying to figure out how to address all of these questions hanging over the future of our, of our earth. And I don't want to miss the opportunity to just kind of think out loud with our DPW Commissioner on some of these questions of the future of these programs.
Yes, my question is, does that have anything to do with Casella? And can we actually have the DPW Commissioner come and discuss that issue in greater depth than we could in reaction?
We, we could do it that way for sure. I will add as just one note, in, in calling around a few people to just sort of prepare for tonight, one of the things I learned, which I hadn't known, was that usually the process that leads to the select board approving these contracts is preceded by a review of the contracts by the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, which has not happened. And so if for no other reason than to, you know, just figure out whether we should do that later, even though it didn't get done in advance of approving these contracts. And by the way, I'm also told that, that, that review often includes a representative of Casella and that it's extremely useful to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee to be able to have that session with a representative of Casella, and that hasn't happened yet.
Okay, I did tell John Dempsey about this discussion. He may be listening in.
I told him as well. And as I say, I, you know, I, I don't think that at the end of the day, we're going to do anything to change these contracts. But before we approve them, I'd like to just have a discussion of some of these questions about the future, particularly of the recycling program.
Okay, Paul?
I was just gonna say first, I appreciate John lagging this. It, it sounds like the issues that you're raising, John, are more longer term strategy about how we should be dealing with recycling in our approach, which could eventually change the contract. But do you anticipate that delaying this would make a, a change in, in the contract? And I'm not sure of the procurement process, if this was done RFP or, you know, what does it mean for the sourcing process if we change the contract at this point based on, we have a philosophy on how we're going to change recycling?
So I, I think we, I don't think we could change the contract. I think certainly, but you know, it's, it's entirely up to the board. You know, we, we would, if there were, if there were changes necessary to the contract, we would probably need material changes we would need to reprocure. But to your point about Solid Waste Advisory Committee, John, I think that's a good point. I want to make sure that we're obviously following the protocol there and that they're consulted. But I would also say, I don't, again, this is where, you know, having the Commissioner, I don't think there'd be a circumstance where we would put that on your agenda prior to there being at least some level of comfort or review on that front. But if, if there's concern on the committee, then we obviously want to make sure that they're involved in this because they're involved not just in reviewing these contracts, but in setting rates and setting policy.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Paul, David?
I would just like an understanding of the, around the consequences of waiting on the contract. So are we under some kind of time constraint? And if so, what would it be?
I don't think you're under, I don't think you're under an extrude time constraint. Let me put it that way. If you wanted to wait two weeks and put this back on, if there were a need, then we could obviously call a remote session and try and address that circumstance. But I don't think we're in a circumstance where two weeks, given that this is a renewal, given that we are in this sort of space that we can, I think we can speak with Casella on this front and make sure that they're aware.
Yeah, I'm not, I have no problem with putting this off for a couple of weeks. I do not want to have the discussion that you raised in the context of these contracts. That's a separate discussion. And to the extent that it is in the context of these contracts, we're really limiting our ability to understand and, and raise the issues that I think you're concerned with. So if we're going to put it off for two weeks, we also should put on the agenda, you know, that discussion and, and deal with these contracts separately.
Yeah, I mean, if we deal with them separately, that's fine too. I, I, I do want to, excuse me, just to stress, it's, it's relevant, excuse me, who your partner is in recycling. And if we are going to move in a different direction in how we do recycling, you know, eventually we're going to have to figure out what kind of partner do we need to move forward with that different direction in recycling. So there's not a clear, there's not a wall between renewing these contracts with this contractor and the future of how we will do recycling. They, they could in fact be tied together and, and learning about the views of the director of the company or the, the people at the, at the leaders, in the leadership of the company, I think will help us in the future decide on what the options are for changing direction with how we do recycling, if that's what we're going to do.
Paul?
These are, these are very two, very, I'm now concerned, John. I was kind of okay at the beginning with where you were going. But now we have a service that's needed. It's a service that's been existing. Blue totes get dragged out to the sidewalk, they come and pick them up. And then they, they deal with, with the recycling. I think you raised a very interesting point. Is, is our approach to recycling the right one? And is this the right strategy? And that may mean, is this the right partner? But I don't think those questions should be raised on the night where we're being asked to approve a contract that's already gone through a sourcing process. There are two very different questions. And I, I'd be concerned, I feel like we're sending the wrong message. I think the message that I think you're trying to convey is we need to reconsider our approach here, long-term. And that may have an implication for who we work with. But that's not the question here tonight.
Yeah. And I'm a little concerned about suggesting that Casella would be not aligned with our long-term needs.
I don't know. I don't know.
But, but, you know, so, so I don't want to have those two things off to get, discuss together. I think David had his hand up.
I, I think there can be an in-between approach. Now, John, is there something concrete in particular that you're concerned about in terms of potential direction or want further information on? I'm just wondering, if we're to wait for two weeks, what is it we would be doing with the contract in those two weeks? What specifically would we be looking for? What would we want to be addressing? And to the extent that it's something that fits within the scope and might just be sort of a minor change that wouldn't require us going back out to bid, then perhaps that'd be worth considering. But I do think we need to have some kind of more specific direction rather than a more macro level reexamination of direction.
You know, I, I'll just remind everyone that I said at the outset, I, I don't think at the end of the day that we're going to change these contracts that are in front of us. And I think we are going to vote to approve them and I'm going to vote to approve them, approve them. But if two contracts with a sum total of over $3 million that deal with how we do something as important as recycling and who we do it with can't be at least used as an opportunity to go over some of the big questions that hover over our, of our solid waste disposal and recycling programs, you know, then what is the opportunity? And that's all I'm saying. And I, I heard you ask a very good question. Is there anything that requires us to approve this tonight? And the answer was no. I mean, we could take a couple of weeks and deal with the contracts two weeks from now, but also deal with these, some of these questions.
So I have two, two couple of things real quickly. One is we are trying to get the Commissioner to just jump on real quick. The other is the, this is an extension of the existing contract. So that's perhaps why we're in this, you know, the situation where SWAC didn't have the, that level of approval. You know, you can see in the, the memo from the Commissioner, right? These are, the contract price schedules are for contract years seven to 11 for the waste hauling and six to 10 for the recycling. So this is an, this is the optional extension of the, this, excuse me, the setting the prices for the extension of the contract as opposed to setting the new contract now. So I do think that's just, you know, it's, it's important to make sure that we are, you know, the, the, when we talk about going back out or, you know, what this contract, what it would involve, this is a continuation of an existing agreement. So it wouldn't just be, you know, it would be difficult for us to reopen this agreement at this juncture. I think we would have to look at, you know, a different bidding structure. But this is a, you know, in, in both of these cases, you're looking at, you know, these, the contract is extending. So the, the, this contract extension for years five through 11, five through 11 of this contract, this is the final year. This is year 11 of the contract FY '25 that we're looking at here. And then on the, similarly, the year 10 of the contract is for FY '25. So what you're doing is you're, you're re-upping this again for the next year of the contract for FY '25 as opposed to renegotiating the contract order. So I just think it's important for us to realize that.
Mike, Mike had his hand up.
Right. So John, you've done something that I think is very, very valuable. It's an opportunity, as you say, to ask the questions about where we go from here. But if we're at the end of a 10 and 11-year contract, let's finish out the contract and at the same time, put on the agenda the discussion that we'd like to have, give the Commissioner of Public Works a chance to have her do some preparation and thinking about this. I'm sure she's, she has thought about it, I would expect. And let's, I, you know, I'm perfectly happy to approve this tonight and on the basis that it is simply an extension of what we've already signed on for.
Paul?
I just want to say first, Chaz, if we're, if we're active, I was going to say if we're actively trying to get the Commissioner, the DPW on during her vacation, I would be loath to do that because she has earned it. So I apologize on behalf of the board for calling you in. But I, I'm going to let you speak, but I, I agree with Mike. I, I think that this is two different questions. I'd be supportive to approve this tonight and then, you know, ask the DPW Commissioner with the Solid Waste Advisory Committee to look at our strategy on how we're dealing with solid waste.
Hey, good evening, Erin.
Good evening. So unfortunately, I did miss kind of the broader picture question and conversation about solid waste, but maybe just a little bit about this contract. And frankly, I, my apologies, if, had I known that there were some questions about this, I would have been glad to be.
I don't think the questions are specifically about these contracts, whether the question is the town's approach to solid waste generally in the context or in light of the fact that there's a lot of concern about the toxicity of, of some of the items in our solid waste, in our, you know, solid waste such as plastics. So I think, yeah.
Right, okay. So two things. So one, we are in, what you're renewing today is an annual contract for both solid waste disposal and recycling collection and processing with Casella Waste Management. This is the fifth year of a five-year extension. So this is actually the 10th year that we've been working with Casella. And these are all contractual rates that were negotiated five years ago. We have a great working relationship with Casella. They provide tremendous service and really supplement the work that we do. They run the transfer station and we work collaboratively with them. They have a very strong recycling component. We use their Murph in Charlestown and they just renovated their facility and are really looking to expand, have new streams that they can pull out of the waste so that there's more recycling options going forward. So I really think they're trying to be a leader in that field and we continue to work with them and press for as many options as possible. In terms of our waste processing, the, the waste itself, our goal is to have less and less tonnage of waste that we're actually sending for ultimate disposal. Our waste is largely waste to energy. And, you know, we, we estimate a little over 8,000 tons per year of waste. We generally, we, years ago, we were, you know, sort of well above that in terms of the tons of solid waste we were disposing of each year. And I'll say this is the first year ever, we just did our numbers, that we broke 8,000 tons. We broke it by just a little bit, 7,924. But due to all the strategies with education, more recycling, pulling more out of the waste stream, the composting, we are seeing a decrease in the actual tonnage that's going for disposal. So one other thing I'll add is that we've been working with the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. The team meets monthly, they're looking at all these numbers and they're part of the conversation as well. We're looking at a cooperative bid right now with Newton. We're looking at a cooperative bid right now with Newton and going out to bid for this sort of full suite of waste management and disposal options to see if there is an economy of scale in working with Newton. So we're looking at that now and we're doing a full analysis of our own operation to see what the best efficiency and option is for the town going forward.
Anyone else? So John, what I, we have the votes to pass these contracts tonight. What I suggest is that you put together a memo, maybe to Commissioner Schute, explaining exactly what you would like to discuss at, at a future meeting so that we can, you know, set that up and, and have that discussion.
But we would have the discussion at a, at a meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As I mean.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Erin, I appreciate very much this. I did not intend when I asked that these items be taken from the consent agenda and put into, you know, the discussion part of the meeting, that it would interrupt your vacation. I really didn't.
No worries.
It's on our end too, apologies.
I'd also like to add that we will be the first municipality in Massachusetts to be operating an electric packer. And that has been grant-supported. So we're deciding the paperwork now and that's going to be on the road shortly.
That's good news.
Okay, so unless there are any other questions, I'd like to move approval of the items on, I'm, no, I'm sorry, I'd like to move approval of the two contracts with Casella, PW 1509 and PW 16, I'm sorry, 1501 and PW 1601. As we discussed, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyac?
I will abstain.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Perelman?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Okay, next, another item we've taken out of the miscellaneous agenda is the annual report submitted by the Brookline Emergency Preparedness Committee.
And I think too, there's, there, you know, some, just a little bit of packet misunderstanding with regard to this. This document is, has been under development for quite some time. These are the hazardous waste management plan, the hazardous materials emergency plan standards, which we've been trying to develop. And the reason why we've been developing this for such a long time is because in order for us to potentially develop life sciences developments in Brookline, we need to have by the state, a hazardous materials emergency plan. So the ration, the reason for why this has been, you know, is coming to you now and why it's so complicated is because it is required by the state in order for us to maintain life sciences labs that want to maintain hazardous materials. So Cheryl and Cheryl Snyder and Chief Sullivan and the whole team over there have really been doing a ton of work on this. And then we received your comments. Thank you to Paul and the chair. We made some edits, one of which is to make sure in writing, obviously, whenever there's an emergency situation, I brief the board. If anyone raises it to me, the first thing that I do usually is text the board or email the board to ensure that they are kept up to date on the situation. But we just wanted to memorialize that in a hazardous waste situation. If there's a hazardous waste emergency that requires a declaration of emergency, that the chair of the select board be notified and put that in writing so that the board is aware. But obviously, in any emergency situation, I try and notify all five members of the board so that everyone is on the same page there. And then, you know, making sure that that is then reflected in there. There were also some appendices dealing with, you know, what's stored where in the town, you know, where we have potentially identified hazardous waste materials and we've made sure that those are included in the packet.
Okay, Paul?
First, yeah, thank you. And I, I do want to say it's an excellent planning document, 89 pages. It takes a little bit of time to slug through it. And I appreciate that you took the edits and incorporated them because I do think this, it's important on Level Two, which is kind of a serious incident. I think the executive board should have some understanding of what's going on. I do want to say, just take the opportunity to thank the team for putting it together because it is really important. But I, I think going forward for something like this, it may have been just mislabeled as an annual report. Sometimes annual reports get skimmed over. This was a substantial document of, of policy and procedure for how we address significant hazards and response to significant hazards within the community. So maybe in the future, documents like this shouldn't be in the consent agenda, they should have their own and then have a presentation about it and help us understand it because it is a very complex topic.
Yes, absolutely. We will, we will take that.
I, I think the mistake was, you know, thinking it was one of the annual reports we're asking all boards and commissions to do. But yes, I agree, it shouldn't be, I mean, first of all, it's not that type of report. And secondly, it shouldn't be in the miscellaneous calendar.
Our oversight and we will correct that going forward. Thank you for that play.
Okay, next item on the agenda.
I do think we need to move to approve that one.
Oh, okay. I'm over approval of the Brookline Emergency Preparedness Committee's annual report. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyac?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Perelman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next, ground floor commercial incentive standards, which will be a vote that we will take to approve the standards that we discussed last week. And I see Maria Morelli is at the microphone and we'll sort of lead off our discussion.
Good evening, Maria Morelli, Senior Planner in the Regulatory Division. Thank you again for reviewing this document so carefully. And for people who are maybe not familiar with this, this is the draft standards and guidelines, which is a companion document to the ground floor commercial provision, which town meeting voted at Fall 2023 town meeting as an amendment to Section 408 of the Affordable Housing Bylaw. And this allows a developer to provide the affordable units of course on site at a higher, at higher income levels in exchange for substantial and lucrative investment in the ground floor commercial space. At the last town meeting, there were roughly three things that the board wanted us to incorporate so that you could review them at this town meeting. One, our staggered dates for when the standards and guidelines would be effective. So one date for Harvard Street and another later effective date for the rest of the town where ground floor commercial is allowed or mandated. And Mr. Warren did have some helpful edits for that, including a monitoring framework, which in three years, the select board would be required after a public hearing to, to provide us a report to, to town meeting in, in three years to see how effective this has been and if there are any recommendations. And Mr. Chairman, you had really very keen updates regarding the letter of credit and we've put some controls around that. We vetted it with town council with some real estate finance professionals in the working group. And I, and I should add, I am joined remotely by Sandy Silk and Ken Lewis of the working group. Should you have any questions that I can't answer? So again, we're really excited about this. The retail and real estate community is also very excited. It is an innovative mechanism and we really do appreciate your extensive review and comments on the standards and guidelines.
Great, Michael?
Yeah, so first of all, I thought that the, having had some experience in the past with, let us credit, I thought that the definitions and the procedure on that was great. That's very, very well done. The one question I had is a very small one. The developers required to put in 15 amp outlets at, on 15-foot centers, that is at every, kind of surprising it's 15 foot as opposed to 16, which is the.
Sorry, could you just speak a little bit louder?
I say it's a little surprising to see that the, it's 15, on 15-foot centers instead of on 16-foot centers, which is what the studs are, but okay. But my question is, is 15 amps adequate for, say, restaurant equipment and that sort of thing? Or should we go to ask, ask for a certain number of 20-amp circuits? I, I don't have the answer, that's why I asked the question.
Yep, so this is the, the very, let's see, just want to quickly look at, are you looking at electrical in the Exhibit A?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. 15 amp. There is a, there is a separate section, A8, for restaurant and food. It's specific to mechanical and plumbing. It doesn't say electrical in, in particular, but for that requirement, I just, maybe this is a little too nuanced, but for ground floor commercial spaces that are under 2,000 square feet, we're not going to require a item A8 in Exhibit A.
Okay.
So therefore, if you are, if you have a space that's 2,000 square feet or more, you would be required, required to make it restaurant-ready in addition to retail-ready. So if we expressly don't have something specific about electrical, it would, it's inferred that it would need to be provided to support line item A8. So we don't want to make people who are not putting in restaurant infrastructure do anything above and beyond what, what the baseline is.
Great.
Okay, I think.
Okay.
All right, and, and the issue of 15, on 15-foot centers as opposed to on 16?
You know, that's, that would be a question, I think.
16 inches, yeah.
Studs are 16 inches.
16 inches, yeah. Yeah, yeah, you're right. 15-foot center, I won't even try to do the math on that. Sorry, let's scrub that question.
Okay.
I was, I was, don't have them wrong, yep.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to just note that we're giving developers an opportunity to help build up our working, our workforce housing stock. And I think that's important. I mean, I've always thought that was important.
Yeah.
And, you know, to indicate what that means, 70% of AMI in, in the Boston area, I think that we're, you know, within that area. For a single person is $79,940. So probably a starting salary for a teacher or, you know, many town workers. Three-member family is $102,830. So we are talking about middle-income workforce-type housing and that, that, I think that's important, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
No.
Okay. We talked this out last, last meeting.
Well, it was a great piece of work.
Bernard, I will, I will add that I just want to say thank you to staff for taking the opportunity to, to work with the board. I know you offered some, some, some edits, I offered some edits and this was a, a several-step process to get her, but the document looks great. I think it's a great policy, so.
Right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you for your questions and comments as well.
Okay, so I'd like to move approval of the ground floor commercial incentive standards as we have talked and as are in the packet. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyac?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
I'm going to make one comment before I vote, Bernard. Only because you said the version that's in the packet, it's not. It's actually the version that was emailed out to us.
Right.
At.
Final version.
Final version.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not the version in the packet. And with that, qualification, I will say.
Okay, David Perelman?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Thank you again, very much.
Great.
Thank you, Maria.
I, you know, just take a moment to say that one of the, I think it's, I think it's generally known that the proposal for a six-story building at 549.
529.
529 Harvard Street has been for, has been withdrawn. And the comment, the informal comment was that the owner of the property would be interested in looking at the standards for commercial development as we are adopting them tonight. And so I would hope that they would now pick up on that and consider putting in a, a four-story building that conforms.
Okay, we'll see.
And just one point on that, and I know we're off subject a little bit, but it is related to the, the thing we just approved. And I, and I want to thank them for hearing the feedback, for their willingness to work with us to look at the, the standards that were, zoning that was passed on Harvard Street as part of the MBTA Communities Act. You know, they were looking forward to the passage of the, the commercial incentive, which you just mentioned, Mike, and I just want to say thank you to them. I, I think it's important for the town, big T-town, little T-town neighborhoods and developers to work together to come to good outcomes that, that benefit everybody. So I was pleased to hear it.
Okay, nothing to go on there. Okay, moving on, police general orders and policies. I see Chief Pastors in the audience is going to sort of go through the, what, eight general orders that have been revised primarily to comply with the Post Commission requirements?
That's almost exactly right. These are to bring us in compliance with a new set of standards imposed by the Mass Police Accreditation Commission, NPAC. Another acronym. So yes, I was before you a few weeks ago, you remember, to present. I think it was also eight at that time of our general orders that needed to be updated. Relatively minor changes semantics for the most part to bring us into compliance with the new set of NPAC standards. We'll, we're up for our assessment for re-accreditation in May of '25. So Lieutenant Hayes has been working particularly hard to, again, review all of our existing policies and procedures and make sure that they are in fact in compliance with the revised standards that we're being asked to hold ourselves accountable to. So, you know, laid out before you, I think in the memo are just a summary of the changes that are being made. Not 100% of the changes are accreditation-related, some of them just needed some general updating. By way of example, our sick and injured policy, we no longer use the physician one urgent care on Boylston Street. It's not there anymore. It just changes, you know, where we go for that. Our section on recording interviews has been updated to reflect the technology advances that our detective division has made. The biggest change maybe is to our mental health policy, which we're constantly updating. And that's a requirement by NPAC that not only our officers and our dispatchers are trained, but it's any non-sworn personnel as well, anybody that's going to be dealing with the public. I am happy to report that we're well-equipped to handle that change, being the training center for Norfolk County when it comes to mental health and de-escalation. So we can supply that training free of charge to all of our employees. And some language changes around non-custodial interviews of juveniles, as well as use of force specific to weaponless physical force, contact controls and things like that.
Okay. So, you know, there's a lot of misunderstanding and what I would call dis-understanding related to policing in this country, but also in this town, or at least has been in the past. And so I'd like to sort of point out some policies I urge people to read, to get an understanding of how policing in, in Brookline is carried out. Particularly the 10.2, responding to individuals with mental health conditions. I mean, there we're talking about not just people with mental health conditions that we usually think about it, but children in particular on the autism spectrum who pose unique problems for policing because they can appear to be threatening at a time when they're not. And, you know, without proper training, as well as an appreciation for differences, you know, very tragic events can happen. Haven't happened in, in Brookline, but nationwide, we see situations where, you know, we, we've had tragic outcomes when, when police did not understand who they're dealing with or didn't care to understand. The, I also urge people to read the use of force general order just to understand, you know, the issues that are presented in policing and how in a modern police force are dealt with a lot differently than they used to be dealt with in the past. And with respect to the required training provisions in the, under the, somewhere. You know, Chad's talked about the incidents in South Brookline where you were able to find, you know, find a suspect in mailbox break-ins. And what, what I thought was very interesting and what is illustrated here is that the policing process included not just officers on the street, but started with the dispatchers, right? And, you know, sometimes we don't really appreciate the role that dispatchers play in identifying, you know, the problem that police have to be sent to in order to protect them as well as protect the, you know, the resident. And, you know, training to, training along those lines is so critically important to proper policing that, you know, it's, it's really important that, you know, we, we have these types of training processes in, in our, for our force. So those are just a couple of things, I think. I urge people to, to read, to get an understanding of the real policing in a modern police force that. to get an understanding of, of the real policing in a modern police force, uh, that, um, I'll wait for the music to. So anyway, uh, so I urge people not just, uh, on the select board as well as in, 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 in town, to not just, you know, listen to the changes that have been made, but actually read these policies and understand them, uh, and appreciate, uh, you know, how, uh, modern our police department is, uh, in, in these areas. So.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I did see that, uh, one of the members of the PCAC, who's Scandinavian, is in the, uh, Zoom and has his hand raised.
Okay.
Scott?
Tiffany, Tiffany will need to promote him. So give her a second.
Yeah, that's great. So there was an additional policy not included in this batch of eight with regard to stop and frisk that, that was submitted separately by the PCAC. I wasn't aware Scott was here, so I was going to ask to hold off on that. But if he's here and ready to talk about it, then let's get that one done too.
Scott has been promoted.
I'm sorry, Scott, I missed Scandinavian.
Yeah. Hello, yeah, mostly I was raising my hand to make sure everyone knew that I was, was here. Judy had asked me to, to attend to talk about the, um, uh, the stop and frisk policy changes. Chief Pastor, do you want to, uh, talk about that before I do? I, I didn't, we can finish up the, uh, the, the batch of, um, of your policy changes before we move on to that one.
Yeah.
Bernard, I have one question, just about the, I know we're going to do, these are two, we're doing these in two sections, right? The ones you just talked through.
And we're only voting on, on the ones that you've listed there, right?
So, uh, the stop and frisk policy, which is twenty-four, um, was submitted separately, but I, I think you have it. If you don't have it, we're planning.
Yeah, we have it, but are there changes that we need to vote on or are we waiting for?
Yes.
Okay, so, but, so, so in addition, there'll be further review that we'll vote on later on?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Scott?
Well, before, before we talked to Scott about the stop and frisk, I just wanted to ask a question about the batch that we just went through. So this is consistent with bringing it up to standards, right?
Yes.
That, that have changed. And we, did we do some of these before?
Yes.
You, okay, so this is another, we're, we're continuing on the process of bringing our general orders up to standard, which I remember Town Council spoke to, and it helps us with, uh, risk mitigation and things like that, following the standards, correct?
Exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Scott?
Sure. Okay, so, um, you know, just as, as context, the, the PCAC has also been going through, we've sort of have two tracks here. One is driven by the, the Police Accreditation Committee, um, Commission rather, and the other is, uh, the PCAC itself has a somewhat ambitious goal to, uh, go through the policy, you know, from stem to stern and, uh, and review it for changes and, and things that, uh, that need to be updated. So this is just the next step in the PCAC work. And it was done with, uh, uh, input from a, a number of members of the, uh, committee. I'll, I'll say there were, um, four things I think I wanted to, to flag that, um, uh, there were significant changes in this. There, there's a lot that is just, um, you know, copy editing and, and bringing up. The first thing we tried to do is tighten up the language to make it actually useful for, uh, a police officer as opposed to, um, uh, a select board member or a PCAC member. To, to some degree, there's still, uh, you know, the actual officer is going to use training, but, um, the original version of this had a lot, was larded with footnotes to legal cases and, and things like that, that are just not, um, not terribly useful to an actual person trying to use the policy. So we, uh, we did some formatting and tightened up the, the, the references and whatnot. Uh, removed a lot of duplication and tried to make this, uh, we, we, I think we removed two pages from the, from the document, just trying to, to tighten up, to make it actually more useful to someone who's, um, reading for a practical purpose. There were, uh, I think two different areas of case law that had been changed since the, the last time this policy was updated in 2017. Um, one was related to, um, light and reasonable suspicion that according to the Massachusetts Supreme Court, uh, the latest rulings, flight does not necessarily indicate reasonable suspicion. And the other, um, was, uh, there are some differences between state law and federal law with regard to motor vehicle stops. And, um, we felt that would, was important for, uh, an ordinary officer to understand where those differences may arise so that they know that if they're working on a task force with, um, a federal officer, for example, that they might have different, um, rules of the game than, than we are required to, uh, to, to adhere to. So, uh, there was some text added for those two areas, um, in, in the sort of realm of trying to make this practical. We also tried to, um, we restructured a few of the, the, the sections just to make the through line clearer between, you know, an air, ordinary conversation, um, which is not covered by this policy. This section, which is when it, it, uh, the situation escalates to investigative, investigatory stop, and then making it clear where the next step is, what leaves this policy and where do you go when it's, um, when it's more than just an investigatory stop and it's, it's actually putting someone in, in custody. And finally, we, there were some changes, uh, tweaks made to the report writing section, trying to bring that up to date with our latest software and, and how our actual report writing process, um, works these days. And I am pleased to say that there's some, uh, additional information I think we can gather on investigatory stops to, to help with the, um, help with the statistics that we review at the end of every year and try to sort of figure out why, where, where the stops came from and to the extent that there are, um, biases or inequity in the, um, in the sort of bottom line, uh, numbers of stops reported per year for, for different ethnic groups, where they come from? Are they a factor? Are they a reflection of the reporter or are they a reflection of our process? Uh, we should be able to get a little bit more insight with some of the, the tweaks to the report, the information gathered in the reports that, that was, uh, that was made in the policy. So that's, that's a brief summary for me. I can of course answer questions on behalf of the committee and of Judy, who I hope is, uh, enjoying her vacation.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. That's very, very interesting and very informative. Mike?
Thanks to both of you, actually. And, uh, the, um, the one thing, especially when I read that the use of force, uh, protocol, it's really important for offices to be comfortably familiar with, uh, with all of this. And it's a huge document when you take it all together. It's almost encyclopedic in, in its coverage and its, and its length. And so, um, what's the, what's the process of training people, bringing them up to speed, making sure that they understand changes, uh, and, uh, that they can really use this, uh, on a day to day basis as opposed to it sitting like a tome on the desk somewhere?
Sure. Specific to the use of force policy that you mentioned, um, the good news about our policy is that it is consistent with not only the laws of Commonwealth that they learn in the academy and that they practice on when they're doing defensive tactics every week in the academy, um, but it's also best practices when in terms of the critical, um, decision-making model, um, the thought processes behind how the policy came to be. It's not like they come to the Brookline Police Department and it's new information. This is stuff that they start learning in the academy.
Well, actually, and I'm not just speaking, but I'm, I'm not just speaking about new recruits, but I mean, somebody who's been on the force for twenty-five years, rules have changed.
Yes.
And they need to know that the rules have changed and be able to use the new rules to their, their benefit and the public's benefit.
Yes. So by way of example, when these, assuming that this batch of policies will be approved this evening, um, I'll make that notification to our training lieutenant, Lieutenant Hayes. And we have new software, um, that's developed partly for record keeping and partly for accreditation, um, where all officers will be required to go in, read the new policy. Changes are redlined. They'll have to sign off that they've reviewed that policy. And if not, their supervisors will be notified if they have not signed off on reading, you know, like, understanding that policy. In addition, certain policies, um, use of force specifically is reviewed in person every year as part of our firearms training, um, and our defensive tactics training by our training team.
Thank you.
Sure.
Paul?
Yep, uh, thank you, and thank you for explaining, uh, the approach, Scott, to the document. Two quick questions. One, in, in the, uh, in the policy and the approach, it, there's timeframes of reference, a brief period of time, right? Everybody's definition of brief. So how do you, I know you, you don't want to set the number of minutes and, but how, how do you convey what brief is? You know, in that type of situation, you know, thirty minutes could go by very quickly, uh, depending on what's going on. How do you convey that to, and train what brief means?
Yeah, that is a deliberately nonspecific. It's deliberately nonspecific language, um, again, because situations are so different. Sometimes, you know, we could have somebody stopped down the street. They give us their name and it's their real name and we're able to communicate with dispatch and they're able to do a background check very quickly and the entire stop can take under three minutes. Sometimes technology doesn't work, somebody's untruthful, um, somebody is John Smith and we have to go through every, you know, make, we find out which John Smith they are, technology's down altogether. There are a lot of different reasons, things, you know, we could be communicating and officer has somebody stopped, they're communicating with a potential victim, um, in a different location and it takes time to put together pieces of a puzzle or realize that they don't fit together. So it is deliberately vague, um, but with every stop, we're able to see, you know, when an officer calls off on the radio, that gets logged into dispatch. A supervisor's listening. In worst case scenario, when somebody does complain that they were detained for an unreasonable amount of time, we do have record of how long they were actually stopped, um, and all radio transmissions that, that came through. So we can kind of go back and put, you know, it'll help in an internal investigation.
Then my second question, uh, relates to body worn cameras and how that intersects with this policy. It's not mentioned specifically. How does, how does the technology intersect with the policy specifically?
So it's a separate policy. It's under the body worn camera policy, but anytime an interaction, um, certainly a, a stop and investigatory, investigatory stop, um, were to occur, it would all be on multiple.
It would be, so it would be recorded and then.
Every, every officer that's there.
And I'm, I'm glad to see that there's, there's data recording on each incident report. I assume that all of that does get reviewed for patterns and learning. And, uh, I assume that's from the PCAC as well as, uh, as well as the department, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Scott, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was just going to add, I, I think it's, it's useful just to give some context to the PCAC's, uh, part of this. The, the policy document is not training and it's not the Supreme Court. And we've been trying to simplify the policy to avoid, uh, confusing it with either of those things, right? The, the training that Chief Pastor, uh, is, is talking about is ultimately what the officer is going to need to use, and that sort of exists in a different place. And certain things like the definition of the word brief ultimately are defined by the, the state Supreme Court and sometimes the, the federal Supreme Court. The policy is not going to redefine those either. And so we've tried to, to trim down the policy where there was a lot of duplication of things like that to, to, because every time we try to summarize something like, you know, what brief means to the state Supreme Court, it means that when the state, state Supreme Court decides something different, we've got to update our policy. And so that's not really useful. So, um, when we can use terms of art and, and, and avoid trying to infringe on the sort of training aspect of it or the, you know, what the Supreme Court and what the legal experts say, uh, these terms mean, we've, we've tried to do. And, and there's, there's a lot of redundancy within the policy itself. This, the investigatory stop and frisk has a section called use of force. We also trimmed that down because we have a use of force policy. It's very good. It doesn't help us to have the same thing stated several times in different places. So, um, yeah, I, that was just some context for, um, for how we, how we approached some of those questions in writing the policy.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Great. Thank you. We have to vote now.
Okay.
Okay, we have two votes. First of all, um, I'm going to take the general orders that, uh, Chief Pastor, uh, presented to us in, in one batch. And then the, um, the, uh, one order that the PCAC, uh, is still working on as a separate vote, or should we take them all together? I guess we can take them all together, right? Okay, yeah. I take that back. But we'll, uh, we'll vote on all nine, um, general orders, including the one that the PCAC is still working on. I move approval of General Order two point two, uh, five point two, ten point two, fourteen point one, twenty-one point one, thirty point three, thirty-two point one, thirty-five point two, and twenty-four point one. I did not read the titles of that to save a little time. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyac?
Aye.
Mike Sandman?
Aye.
Dave, uh, Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Furman?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Scott.
Very much.
Okay, next.
Um, I did want to flag for you, the members of the school committee are here. Uh, and the superintendent, I know that they have a deadline because they need to get down to advisory at seven forty-five if you wanted to take their matter.
Well, they're next.
Oh, there you go.
Okay.
Never mind.
Reserve fund transfer, schools. Would someone like to introduce this to the audience? It's a question of approving and submitting to the advisory committee at a meeting in a few minutes. There is a, a reserve fund transfer request in the amount of $400,000, uh, with respect to the school department.
I do.
Yeah. Well, interesting, uh, Carla sent it, uh, to me. I didn't know if she sent it to anybody else.
What we can do is, can you email?
I told her, I said, I haven't seen this, but thanks. Yeah, it's, yeah.
You email me the.
It was sent in late. It, it was sent in late though. We should, pardon? I didn't, I was just told that earlier today.
That's what we heard.
Yeah.
Just sent it to you. Carla sent it to me.
So we should ask that question.
Getting a backdoor, uh, four ninety-three, something like.
Pardon?
Four ninety-three.
Yeah.
It went up from four hundred.
Yeah. Four hundred, as I said, the four hundred was. Send David Bobas, Kathy.
Yeah, there. Sent to your, uh.
You found it?
Well, he sent it, John. John has it from, from a source.
Came, came by a circuitous route.
Second, I just gotta log myself in here. Thank you. Log in here. Gmail, you should then be able to screen share. So. We know when you're ready, yeah.
Could you send that to me? Oh, yeah, yeah, sure. Bernard, I didn't realize you were also in NAM. Okay, what I'm sending to you should have in this attachment.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's not working yet.
What about yourself? My cell phone's up and running.
Well, if you send a PDF, that'll work. Sorry.
Sorry. Then I can.
Who, uh, we want to get call the fire brigade and ask Libia to call us?
I'm sorry, what?
Ask Tiffany to call. Ask Tiffany to help, help over the phone.
Okay, ask who?
Tiffany.
Oh, Tiffany. Uh, what can she do? Okay. Uh, Tiffany.
Yes.
Do you have access to, to these, um, to these computers?
No, Bernard, what, can you, can you tell us what's going on? We aren't really keyed in on.
Your phone had to tell me what's going on.
We're looking, we're, we're trying to get the presentation up. Can we have Tiffany do it if, if you can't do it?
Worst case scenario, email it to me and I'll, I will.
We just, we just emailed it, they just emailed it to me in a PDF format, which should work, provided it goes through. Should. And then we can run it from there. We'll see. There it is, here we go. All right. All right, so. Go. Screen. Yeah.
You should be able to use the arrow keys to move back and forth.
Thank you.
Could you move the transcript?
Yep.
Good, thank you. Okay.
Ready.
Tell us why and what.
Okay, um, first, uh, by way of introduction, I think I know everybody, but, uh, you don't necessarily know, uh, Diane, our, uh, uh, finance director. So I'm Susan Givens, the Deputy Superintendent for Administration and Finance. And with me here this evening is, uh, our finance director, the esteemed, uh, I'm Diane Johnson. Um, and so we're going to walk you through a few slides and, and, uh, and then take any questions you may have. Um, I also want to give a shout out to the town finance team, uh, payroll department, uh, uh, Link and, and Michelle. Um, all of them have been incredibly helpful and supportive all year. And I think we have forged a, a positive working relationship with them. And I, I do want to thank them very much for all of their efforts to, uh, help us navigate through this, provide us with information and guidance. And, um, you know, uh, a shout out to them as well. As our finance team, under the direction of, uh, Diane.
Just move closer to the microphone, yeah, just.
Even more.
So the people will catch you on, yeah, it's.
Is this better?
Yeah.
Okay.
For the, the audience at home.
Right, right in front of your mouth.
Okay. How's that?
Perfect.
Okay, great.
And don't move around too so much.
Oh, it's so hard for me. I'm a wiggle worm, I've been that way my whole life. Um, okay, so I'll, I'll behave myself for you. Okay, so let's get started. Maybe. Maybe not. But I'll scroll. Okay.
You have a half an hour, so.
Yeah, I was just trying to get through, uh, the technology piece, but, um, yeah. So, uh, Diane and her team, um, have been working really hard, uh, these past few months to find ways to mitigate the impact of, uh, a budget shortfall that we identified back in, um, April. Uh, at this time, as we, uh, close out the year, uh, we are $493,953 short of what our appropriation will tolerate. And so what we're requesting is a reserve fund transfer in that amount. So you may say, well, you know, how, how did we get to the spring before we, uh, were able to identify, uh, this challenge? And so there were, there were a number of factors that obscured our view. Um, and I thought that I would take a moment just to, um, uh, share with you some of those, those, uh, items. So first, um, as you all know, last year, uh, there was an override passed, not this year, but the year before, um, for, uh, the FY24 budget. Included in that package was an agreement to reduce the budget by 1.85 million dollars. Um, so when the budget's developed on the school side, um, it's really a kind of a bottoms up approach. And so when the budget is initially, uh, presented to the school committee, it's, um, based on a whole body of work that takes place. Any adjustments that are made after the presentation, um, there's like a reconciliation process that needs to take place. With the, uh, timing of the override and, um, the close of the end of the year, uh, right, right after that. And a change in staffing, um, in the, um, Office of Administration and Finance, there wasn't adequate time to really be able to do a full reconciliation from the original budget. Number wise, yes, but the detail that underpins that, no. And so when we, um, began fiscal 24, we didn't have a reconciliation, um, of, of accounts, um, based on reductions and then adds on the override. In addition to that, um, some of you probably are aware that the chart of accounts have changed, um, a couple of times over the last number of years. And, um, in the middle of the FY24 process, the development of that and then the implementation of it, there, there was, um, a change in the chart of accounts. And so when, when trying to make sense of the numbers and, um, and triangulate with prior year expenses, it was a little difficult because the same account numbers weren't you, years, used in, in the, in the years following up to, uh, budget development. So that, that made it a little more challenging to try to tease out, you know, does this number make sense? And does it include all the expenses over here? Or in fact, did this roll up into something else? Um, one-time revenue, uh, funds were depleted and, and rightly so, because you had ARPA money that came from the state, uh, or from the federal government when COVID hit. And you were allowed to spend that over a number of years. And so, uh, last year, um, you tried to capture any operating expenses that had been pushed off into ARPA and/or new expenses that arose as a result of, um, COVID and capture that into, in, into the budget. And so with the depletion of one-time revenues, um, and, and the allocation of expenses not being identical from year to year, it also made it a little challenging to be able to, uh, see a through line from where things were charged, um, and where, uh, funding was, was, uh, set aside. Then that we had, uh, some issues with data integrity and accessibility. So data integrity, meaning that, um, the information that we had, does it in fact reconcile with what's in the accounting system? And, uh, with Munis, we found that, uh, uh, there was some, um, some, uh, difficulty in making translations from what was in Munis to what was in the budget. Uh, we, we had a few workarounds once Diane got here to help us better understand, um, um, how, how the data connected. Uh, and so, uh, we were able to, as we got further into the year, be able to, to see things in a way we couldn't, uh, before then. And then in terms of accessibility, um, there are storage systems that typically organizations have, that all of your organizational assets get saved to. Um, when the school district moved to Google and moved away from, um, uh, the, the, the organizational, the, uh, public schools of Brookline, um, uh, storage, uh, systems, then, then things were stored under people's names and then accessibility to documents, um, became more difficult to access. Uh, there's still, uh, quite a bit of work to be done in that area, um, but it did, it did slow us down, um, trying to, uh, find, you know, some, some of the original documents that we needed in order to be able to tie things out. And then of course, we had staff turnover and the town had staff turnover and in finance and in payroll. Um, and that's, that, uh, that caused some challenges. And then of course, the fiscal year close of 23, um, uh, you know, I, I think the not, was not finalized until February. So as we were going through and looking at special revenue funds and what's the fund balance? And what are we receiving, uh, for fund balances as we opened the year? Uh, we didn't have that information until much later than we had hoped. So all of those things, you know, uh, inhibited our ability to see clearly, um, what was included in the budget, um, where, where things were funded from, um, by what funding source? And, um, therefore be able to reconcile expenses against that. Okay. So, um, hotspots, as, as the picture became clearer, one of the things that we, um, were able to see, um, as we actually developed the FY25 budget was that, uh, special revenue, uh, or special education accounts were, um, running, as we say, hot, meaning that they were over, they were coming in overspent. In total, these hotspot accounts that fall in the area of special education were about $4 million, um, over what the, the amount that was allocated in the budget was. Now, um, thankfully, uh, we had some accounts that were non-special education, that, uh, we had money, um, that was unspent. And so that helped to offset, uh, the, 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 um, the over expenditures in some of these special education accounts. But, um, all in all, um, it really kind of boiled down to two primary areas, uh, that were significantly, um, overspent. One was in special education transportation, that amounted to about 1.6 million. And then, uh, paraprofessional salaries by, uh, 1.4 million. So, uh, uh, you know, as I said, we were able to reduce, um, the overall deficit, the bottom line deficit, um, by freezing other accounts and/or, um, not spending money in areas, um, that we had, uh, initially anticipated, uh, spending. So I'm going to let Diane walk you through the next, uh, three slides and, and then we'll, um, uh, close it out and a- answer any questions you might have. Thank you. I started in November and, uh, jumped right in on the 25 budget development. And as we were getting the budget put together in March and was able to really turn my attention to this fiscal year, um, ouch. And it was, uh, lots of busyness trying to figure out, um, what was going on and what to do about it. As soon as we saw that we had these special education accounts and other accounts running so hot, we immediately asked all of the school department budget managers to send us a list of what they needed to finish out FY24. You know, what were their real budget needs to project them to the end of the year? Based on those projections, it looked like we were going to be about 1.7 million dollars over budget to close the year, which was particularly horrifying. Starting from there, we began to look more closely. We looked at, um, all the funds that had been encumbered in purchase orders that had been set aside for specific purchases and really started to drill down into those, those purchase orders. You know, are you really going to spend 100% of that purchase order? If you are, fine, if you're not, let's release the balance and we can spend it on other things. Um, are you going to do this initiative? Well, maybe yes, maybe no. If no, can we push it to next year? Um, oh, we really wanted to have this person in, but we can't schedule them. Great, let's not spend this money. Is this something we can do without? Terrific, that's money we can save. So with a combination of deferred expenses, um, denied expenses, some of which were painful, I'm sure you heard about the trout. And other issues like that, we were able to peel things back. Also, some of the projections were a little too much. And as the spring progressed, we could see that the prices were coming down on some things. Initially thought, we thought our legal expenses were going to be higher than they ultimately ended up being. And so as the spring went on, the number dropped. When we got to the beginning of June, it looked like it was going to be about 400,000. And then as we closed the year, another $100,000 of expenses that broke my heart came in right at the end of the fiscal year. And so we ended up where we did, just under half a million. So this is a more detailed progression of that. Projections changed, we were able to release some funds that had been encumbered, but ended up not being needed. We were also able to take a closer look at our special revenue funds as that settled out with the close of the prior fiscal year. And, um, we were able to sort through things and move expenses to where they belonged. We were, um, deferred, denied, um, circuit breaker, the funds that we get from the state in compensation for extraordinary special, special education expenses. We were able to correct and move towards best practices recommended by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. An increase for FY24 to the full amount that had been collected in FY23. And that helped us recover just over $300,000 for this year, further reducing our deficit amount. So you can see the steps that we went through from the 1.7 to bring us down to the 493 that we are at today. Forgive my voice, I, um, I sound like I smoke three packs a day, but I promise you I don't.
Before you go off on that, could you go back to that slide just for a sec? Is it okay if I ask a clear question, Bernard? So I'm just, I'm curious about the $95,000 surprise. What was that?
Well, one of it was an out-of-district tuition bill that somehow had been overlooked and came flying in on the very last day of the fiscal year, much to my displeasure.
Overlooked by us or overlooked by the district that was billing us?
Yes.
Guess what?
Yes, which one?
Both.
Both.
They didn't send us and we didn't ask them for it.
Asking for it.
Okay. Thank you.
So I was very displeased, as you can imagine. But we are putting mechanisms in place to see that that doesn't happen again. And that brings us perfectly to our next point. Which is, um, some of the things we're putting in place to see that we don't find ourselves in this position moving forward. The paraposition, the paraprofessional overrun. Paraprofessionals are one of those things that are essential to special education costs, which are federally mandated by law. Paraprofessionals are the kind of position that turnover frequently. You add them, you delete them, they come, they go. It's very difficult to keep track of them. Position control in its simplest form is a way of thinking of controlling how many bodies you have. Think about it as chairs. You budget a chair and you can have a chair that's full of a body or you can have an empty chair. But in your budget, you only have a certain number of chairs. You never have more bodies than chairs. You can have more chairs than bodies, but never more bodies than chairs. And it sounds like this should never be a problem, but with paraprofessionals coming and going, new student comes in, a student has an evaluation, it says they need more support, you've got to hire a special, a paraprofessional right away. It is very confusing and we have many, many paraprofessionals in the district. This is not a problem unique to Brookline by any means, it's common in all districts. Paraprofessionals are an area that's all districts struggle with. Position control is a way to really keep track of your salary budget. And salaries, as we know in education, are the lion's share of our budget. By implementing position control, we're going to have a really tight hold on our salary budgets going forward. Extra compensation and additional compensations. The way, as we can tell from prior times in Brookline, there's been, there were sufficient funds in FY24 for all compensation, but it wasn't budgeted in a very granulated way, it was all sort of in a big bundle. And so when you bundle, if you have enough money, it's fine. But if you want to, if you want to know precisely what you're budgeting, it's really important that you know all the elements of it. And as we're moving to position control and a very precise understanding of our salaries, these additional compensation things are popping up all over the place. We don't have the lock on them that we wish we did going into 25, but that's what we're working on right now. So I feel confident that by the end of 25, we're going to have a really good lock on every piece of the salaries. Proportionally, it's a much smaller share of the budget than the bodies, that's the lion's share. But that's something we're continuing to work on to get more and more granulated and exactly what we owe for our salaried people. Contract approval and oversight is something else we're putting in place so that we can have an earlier picture of what we owe to people that serve our students. Purchase order management, making sure that people, if they've got their purchase, they pay the bill and they release the balance right away so that we don't end up with a lot of excess at the end of the year. Now, excess purchase orders at the end of the year flow back to free cash for the town, the money isn't lost. But it's not good fiscal management, it can overstate a deficit when it really isn't there. So we want to get people in the habit of really looking at their purchase orders frequently and reducing them if the funds aren't needed. And we also are working on parent, making sure that people have exactly the right access in the financial system that they need and know more than that. Or enough, because some of the right people don't have the right access. And that's been a work in process.
Well, I just, uh, I wanted to just make sure, so number four, purchase order management, does that cover the 95,000 end of year surprise?
Yes.
Tuition, it does, okay.
Yes, absolutely. Okay. So what we're asking for is a reserve fund transfer. So what we're asking for is a reserve fund transfer for our deficit balance. Or the other option, if that isn't available to us, is that we could use our circuit breaker funding that's been earmarked for next fiscal year to plug our gap for this year and then unfortunately, that would put us in a deficit position for starting FY twenty five. And with some of the unknowns around additional compensation for next year, that would not be an advantageous position for next year. So we really hope that that our request for a reserve fund transfer will be favorably reviewed. And we'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Mike?
So a number of, a number of questions. I should say that before joining the select board, I was chair of the advisory committee, before that, the school subcommittee, the advisory committee. So a lot of this language is very familiar and some of the history as well. And the circuit, there are a number of things. You made the comment that with the circuit breaker accounting, moving toward best practices as recommended by Desi. What does, I'm a little concerned that that wasn't the case before. And when you say moving toward, does that mean you still have some distance to go?
So best practice according to Desi is you collect your circuit breaker reimbursements in one fiscal year and then plan to spend them in the following fiscal year.
Oh.
So, you know, it's rolling. So we collect in this year. We spend last year's in the next year while we're collecting that year's.
Right. Even though your expenses may have gone up,
Correct.
that would normally be covered by circuit breaker.
Correct, because it's always in arrears.
Yeah.
And so by having a full year's collection that you're budgeting for the next year and you're spending within a defined budget, you know exactly how much circuit breaker money you have as opposed to spending the money as fast as it's coming in from the state.
Right.
Because some years the state can't make their circuit breaker.
Yes, right. It depends on what the legislature does with the budget.
Correct. So that's a more risky proposition. You know, in the event that we don't get the reserve fund transfer, we will have to do that. We will have to dip in likely
Right.
into the money that's coming in in FY twenty five.
Which is not best practice.
Which is not best practice.
Most assured.
Is not barred, is there's nothing wrong with it.
Right.
It's just not best practice.
Okay. Charter, chart of account.
That that will cause us to have a structural, move the structural deficit.
I appreciate, yeah, I understand what you're saying. Chart of accounts. I recall one change of chart of accounts when people were moved from one category to another within the accounting system. They were still doing the same job and probably within the union contract that we're doing exactly the same thing, but, well, I'm sure they were. But they were shifted with the chart of accounts. That happened again a second time, and it sounds like there wasn't a sort of a translation table between the two. And I presume that none of that happened on your watch. But if you ever do that again, for God's sake, do that translation table.
We're hoping to be able to do some multi-year comparisons based on the end of the year report. We'll allow an apples to apples comparison over multi-years.
Okay. And I guess the last thing I would say is that slide that shows the controls that you're being, that you're putting in place. If I were you, I would show that slide at the beginning as well as at the end of your presentation, because that's certainly something that advisory committee is going to focus on is how are you going to prevent this from ever happening again?
Well, that's certainly our goal.
And with a lot more detail. David?
So I do have a question regarding position control, particularly in the context of paraprofessionals. So given that the paraprofessionals that I think you are referencing as the primary driver to going over budget were primarily IEP based? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. And so with position control, if IEPs are requiring that additional paraprofessionals be hired, what would you do to compensate for that? Would you be looking at other areas of the budget? Would you be looking at discretionary paraprofessionals, like the first grade ones? How does that work?
It would depend on what is needed. It's typically an area where there's a lot of turnover, so ideally there'll be empty positions somewhere that, you know, if somebody now needs a one-to-one paraprofessional, hopefully there's an empty paraprofessional position sitting somewhere in the school, somewhere, that we could take and repurpose to a one-to-one. So that there's a chair in the budget that was for the same amount of money for a different purpose that's currently not utilized, that we could recreate for another purpose, but the funds are there.
Okay.
So unless we had a huge run on it. But I do want to be clear, when I was shaking my head again, I do want to be clear that it wasn't paraprofessionals that caused the deficit. In aggregate, the school department had sufficient salary funding to cover all of our salaries. Paraprofessionals were over the paraprofessional budget line, but all of salary together was budgeted sufficiently.
Okay.
Paul?
Yep, thank you. First.
Were you finished?
No, I just wanted to make a separate point. It's not really a question, but the advisory committee, Subcommittee of Schools, voted earlier today, three to zero to zero for the reserve fund transfers. I think that's important information for us.
Okay, Paul?
First, welcome. You said you joined in November. I love your clarity in getting to the point. I also like that you used the phrase, you were particularly horrified. I'm glad that you were particularly horrified, although we've had some, you know, budget overage. We had to go to to the reserve fund as well, so you're not, this is not unique. There's, what I took away is there's two primary drivers, and I know you found ways to fill the holes, but I think it was out of district, special ed, was that one bucket?
Transportation.
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 And what did that amount, what was the total before you found a way to fill it? But what was the total?
1.5 million dollars in transportation.
Okay.
400,000 for 400,000 over budget in settlements.
Okay. And then what was the, what was the overage for paraprofessionals? I know you found a way to have.
0.4, but that was already covered within salaries.
I got it. So going forward, do we have a good handle on transportation in the coming, okay?
We've done two mitigation factors. We've gone out to bid, we have a new, we have a new vendor coming in that will be able to cover all of our needs. Much of what drove that overage is that our former primary contractor didn't have, didn't have sufficient vehicles to meet all our needs. And so we had to go out to many small contractors who were able to charge whatever they wished.
Okay, sending them by Uber. And then the, the paraprofessionals, your, the term you used was position control. Do you, do you have position control at this point, or you're working on it?
No, we got it in place for FY twenty four, and it is, it was the, it was the backbone of the FY twenty five budget.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
John?
I'm gonna ask some pretty basic questions because I'm just having a little bit of trouble getting my head around what's being asked here. Has the school department ever in similar fashion come to the select board in in a fiscal, new fiscal year and ask for a reserve fund transfer to cover an overage from a prior fiscal year?
I'm sorry, I can't answer that. I'm very new.
How does, and Jazz or someone else?
We actually discussed that informally when we were having, having dinner. Because I asked essentially the same question once before. There was a reserve fund transfer for an unanticipated expense, now that I've forgotten what it is. But it goes back, it goes back several years anyway. It's a very rare thing for the, for the school department coming for a reserve fund transfer.
And my assumption is that in the absence of, you know, that kind of a request, the school department would have to essentially figure out how to live with the fact that they overspent what their revenues were in the prior year, one way or another.
It would push the problem forward into the year.
Yeah. And, you know, one of the disadvantages of doing the exercise that you just did very well of taking, you know, a one, what was it, 1.7 and whittling it down to 400,000, 1.7 million, 400,000 now, is it, you know, leaves me wondering if we put this off for a few more weeks, would you be able to whittle it down to 200, you know, or maybe whittle it away altogether? Because it sounds like there's an awful lot of kind of loose items that, you know, we might discover later actually, to our surprise, resulted in an even better position from FY twenty four.
We still have half a million dollars in encumbered funds that some of which will undoubtedly flow back to free cash. At this point, I wasn't be able to reduce those encumbrances any further based on the information I have. So I can't estimate what portion of those will flow back to free cash, but undoubtedly some of that will.
And then, again, I'm not sure who this would answer this question, but is what's being requested, what I described, which is funding from the FY twenty five reserve fund for an FY twenty four deficit? Or did the FY twenty four reserve fund not get exhausted and would, and how is that carried on the books and would it be taken out of FY twenty four?
It's an FY twenty four reserve fund transfer.
Yeah. And so.
An FY twenty four budget, sure.
Yeah.
But, but at what point does the FY twenty four reserve fund get closed out?
I can, I can jump in and answer that if that would be helpful.
Yes, Charlie.
So Charlie Young, Assistant Town Administrator for Finance. So when you're in this early couple of weeks after July first period, John, you're actually sort of in between the fiscal years. And so the books have not been closed on FY twenty four yet. The, the comptroller's office has told us that they need these votes by tomorrow morning essentially to not have to enter them as a prior year adjustment, which has to go to the auditor and is sort of considered to be less, you know, sort of less tasteful than having done it in that fiscal year. So as of today, we're still in FY twenty four, we're using the FY twenty four reserve fund, and this would resolve the deficit in FY twenty four and not be a prior year adjustment. Now, just to be clear, you know, we get the audit sometimes several months, several months from now, depending on when the books are fully closed. And that, that fully closed usually happens in around August. But this really does need to happen sooner rather than later. And that's why the schools are saying this is the reserve fund transfer or it's circuit breaker money.
And, and do we have that money in, in the reserve fund from FY twenty four?
Yes, we do. We have that money available. I could pull up a chart that shows what is left in there if you'd like after what's been approved before.
Yeah, be nice to.
Or could you give us the amount?
One minute. Let me pull it up.
Okay.
It also includes, that's, it has to be net of what we're expecting for the fire department as well.
Well, yeah.
Believe it is.
Yeah, I have that as well, Mike, but give me just one moment.
And, well, I'll pose the other question while you're looking that up, Charlie. How does this impact our calculation of the town-school split in FY twenty five? If, or I don't even know if I'm thinking FY twenty five or FY twenty six. I guess it's FY twenty six. You know, knowing that the actual spending by the schools was more than was allocated to them in their budget.
Well, I think that what we're going to do is work with the schools to sort of figure out what their FY twenty six budget projection is as early as possible. So over the next couple, over the next several months. And when we come to you with the long-range financial projection at your December workshop, or we could talk, we could discuss it sooner if you'd like, but that's really when all the numbers are falling into place and we can give you a realistic idea of what our future deficits are. Then we'll be able to show you the impact of, you know, this situation after it's been resolved going into FY twenty six on the, on the budget for the schools and the town. And you can, you'll be able to see then basically, okay, here's what we have for revenue going into FY twenty six, and here's what the school's spending is supposed to look like. I think that it is important to note that, right, like we, we aren't just automatically going to tack 500,000 on to what we expect the schools will need in FY twenty six. I think we'll be looking for them to give us direction based on their experience now as to what that realistically is going to look like. And then we'll come back to you and tell you what, and show you what that deficit looks like.
I'm going to conclude with just one last question. Would we have been able to afford a 1.7 million dollar reserve fund transfer? I'm just curious.
No, we would not have if, if all other reserve fund transfers were approved. So let me give you, let me share my screen here. And this will actually pop screen share at the presentation page, and we'll need to, we'll need to open that back up if you want to. So here is the FY twenty four appropriation for the reserve fund, which is just around $3 million. We had a couple of reserve fund transfers approved earlier in the year. One for 20,000 and 140,000. There was the school utilities transfer that was approved in May. And after those three total approved, you have around 2 million remaining. And then not shown here is the school budget deficit, because I had not entered it in yet. But it is, if I remember correctly, 493, 593. And so if the advisory committee approves the fire department's reserve fund transfer request and the town meeting reserve fund transfer request, as well as this one, we will have a remaining balance in the fund of 670,000. So if this had been a million more, we would not have had the funds in the reserve fund be able to transfer out.
Okay. And then, then what would he, would he have done?
Well, likely would have been a combination of the reserve fund and the, and circuit breaker, right?
Suspect.
Yeah, Mike?
So I think the point that you make is a really interesting one about the question that you ask about, well, how does this affect the town-school partnership? Because it's not an inconsequential amount of money, even reduced as it is. And as I say, this is rare. I think Melissa said that it's only been, there only been two of these in her entire career of experience with, with the town. That, so this is the first time it's, it's come up in a very long time. But there will be some free cash generated as, as we've heard, there are some currently encumbered funds that will be released back to free cash that will offset some of this, but there will be a consideration, absolutely.
But I will note it's half of the fire department's request. Right?
It may be half of the fire department's request, but when we allocate 6040 or 5960, 5941, there is a.
But the fire department went over by a million dollars.
I know, but the fire.
We can ask the same question.
The fire department is within the 41% or the 40% of the budget that's allocated to town operations.
But not the million that they went over on, for overtime. Right? So I mean, this is, it's a little funny to me that we're giving the schools a bit of grief coming for.
So, so your question is.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just, it's just that
That's a good question.
If you look at the town, we're way over. How much have we, Charlie? How much has the town pulled out of the reserve fund so far?
Well, if you, if I were to take out school budget deficit, you know, you'd have nearly a million, right? Because you begin with 3 million and you have the 757,000 for building department and 900,000 for fire department, you know, legal services, almost 2 million dollars.
But the 3 million dollars that goes into that reserve fund is a piece of the town's allocation.
Well, we're the only ones that are funding the reserve fund, the town side?
That's.
We're the one that has the money.
That's, it comes out, it comes out of what's left from the school budget, or left over from this.
But they also put in free cash. Okay. I guess just my point is, you know, we're.
Right, I don't want to be.
There's, 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 there's a lot of pressure on the reserve fund from both the town and.
Fair enough. And, and it's not a matter of penalizing, you know, this is. It's a, it's a, it's a matter, okay, this is a a screw up of various, various and sundry pieces that and listening to the controls that are being put in place now, the response to it are encouraged, but just the same, it has an effect on the on the use of, on the split and the way we calculate the split. I will say, if I can just make one more comment, that I had understood, somebody had explained to me the issue with the transportation providers, that, that the provider that we had wasn't able to cover the additional request for out of district. And we therefore had to go to the highest bidders, as it were, not the lowest bidders. And that you're able to, hopefully able to correct that. I think that's a very important point to make at the beginning when you explain, when you go downstairs and you explain the transportation, that that's what happened.
Thank you.
I just jump in for just one second. I'm sorry, Mike, I just don't, I don't want to. I may have misheard you, but I thought you said that the reserve fund comes out of the town's allocation in the town-school partnership. The reserve fund is included in the fixed costs that are deducted. The Reserve Fund is included in the fixed costs that are deducted before the town school partnership. So the Reserve Fund is above the law.
Yes.
So that is, that's something that the town and schools benefit, both benefit from and is paid into before the the revenue is split.
Right, it's just that it's only been the town that's benefited from it.
Well, well, even even reemphasizes my last point. We are a bigger draw.
Okay, okay. Any other questions, John?
Paul makes a good point. At the same time, I think the distinction that matters is whether it's the fire department or the school department or any other department is the difference between a Reserve Fund transfer that results from an awareness during the fiscal year that I like the expression running hot, you know, that this particular account, some other particular account is running hot. We're going to need money by the end of the year because this is running hot. It's a little disconcerting when, you know, the reason for the Reserve Fund transfer is we didn't know until after the year had ended that certain things ran hot. And we didn't know that we were going to actually benefit from certain revenues that we we didn't realize were coming in. So that's the distinction that matters to me, whether it's the school department or the fire department or any other department. And it gets to this whole business of taking money at before, excuse me, after the end of the fiscal year from the Reserve Fund. We we might not have enough money in the Reserve Fund after the end of the fiscal year to deal with these kinds of requests that come in after the end of the fiscal year. Excuse me.
Okay, any further discussion? It's past seven forty five, so maybe we should just vote and let it go upstairs or downstairs.
Not necessary to vote, but if you.
You want us, you want our vote, I think, right?
I thought the idea was that, you know, we have to approve the transfer to the advisory committee.
We always, we.
We have always done.
Okay.
You don't want our approval?
Folks, that's the, I also.
We desperately want to approve this.
We also can't have conversations here.
No one can hear me, Ryan. Yeah, yeah. I would, I guess I would say to staff, school department staff, I think it would benefit you to have the approval of a select board as you go and make an ask of advisory for the Reserve Fund transfer. But if you don't want it, we.
Yes, please. Yes, please.
That's why we're here.
Yes, please.
And we're going to assert our authority to give those those approvals, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I move approval of the Reserve Fund transfer in the amount of four million nine hundred.
Four hundred ninety.
No, no, not four million.
I'm sorry, four hundred. Okay, four hundred, give me the exact.
Four ninety three, nine fifty three.
Four ninety three, nine fifty three. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoye.
Aye.
Michael Sandman.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
David Perelman.
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Right.
We have our approval, like it or not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My downstairs.
Okay, next, boards and commissions reap appointments. Did you have your hand up?
I did.
Oh, that's just.
I'm about to break my pencil.
I, I, with my peripheral vision, I saw your microphone. Thought that was your hand. Okay, so first of all, boards and commissions reap appointments. These are members of boards and commissions who are being reappointed after their term has expired. We have interviewed these candidates in the past. They're for the most part known by the select board. However, if any select board member would like to pull any of them out for individual interview, they have the opportunity to do that. I haven't heard anyone indicating that they want to interview any in particular, so unless Paul has.
No surprises. This is not an October surprise. I did want to make a comment about this.
Let me finish my.
Okay, great.
So I didn't receive any requests to pull anyone out, so we'll we'll vote for them all together and move on to the interviews with new new appointments to boards and commissions. Paul?
Yep, so I first, I am grateful for the anybody that's is willing to serve, to come forward and put themselves out there to be selected and then to serve, because it's not always easy to serve the public in that capacity. We have talked about the need for increasing participation from seniors and others in our community on boards and commissions that typically haven't had that type of representation. When when I see a board that comes before us and everybody's great, actually, and their incumbents, and because everybody's being renewed, there's no call for candidates to come forward. I think we miss an opportunity to potentially diversify a board or commission. And I know in our, in the town administrator's newsletter for the for July, there's a long list of here's all the boards and commissions that have openings. Openings where someone has decided not to continue to serve, so there's an opening. And I think I'd like us to consider that when you have a board that has three or four seats or even one seat that's up for renewal and that person still wants to serve, I think it's okay to still have people know that there's an opportunity to serve. Incumbency is an automatic appointment, and I think we've been thinking like that. And I think if if we if we have certain boards and commissions that don't have turnover and we just get incumbency, we're not going to see the type of diversity that we'd want to get on the board. That I just raised that as an issue. It's not going to something to solve tonight. I'm going to support all of the candidates for renewal on the existing boards and commissions that are already full. But I just, I think it's something we should think about.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? I've made a an effort to make sure that on especially key boards and commissions that they are representatives of senior interest as well as a representative of other interests that are sometimes overlooked in the deliberations of those committees. And I think we've been pretty successful in doing that.
We've made progress.
And I appreciate the fact that people have been willing to come forward despite the fact that they're doing a lot of other things and serve on 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 committees and boards and commissions of the town. For example, the committee that we're going to be voting on later on for the Fisher Hill Uses Committee. You know, I really made an effort to ask people who they would like to see on that committee. And we came up with the name of someone who's going to be really very helpful. Not that that person is is responsible for all the senior issues, but that 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 person is there and can help educate the entire committee as to how they need to think about not just their particular, you know, interest area, but you know, taking into consideration the needs of everyone in the community, particularly seniors, but also particularly you know, our most vulnerable populations.
I think Bernard, the the board I caught my attention, again, every, we have great individuals serving on this board is the transportation board. It's skew young. We do have one person, Nancy Moore, who's on this late tonight, who I think is, I'm not going to wager whether she's a senior or not, but I think that, you know, she she certainly does represent a viewpoint in consideration in those areas. And she's the liaison to the Disability Commission, but the transportation board does skew younger, more active, you know. And I it would be, that's an area of of interest to see some diversification on the transportation board.
If I could just comment for for many years, Gus Dreisen was on the Transportation Board. And Gus was, for a long period of that time, certainly would fit your 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 definition of a senior. But and even my definition of a senior. But I don't think that Gus ever spoke specifically to senior issues. I think you have to be careful that somebody who is of a of a particular age doesn't necessarily represent people of that age group. If you're looking for a representation that is specific to seniors, you have to ask people about it.
Well, seniors aren't, certainly aren't monolithic at at all. But again, I'm just saying that is we've, as a as a select board, have consciously and unconsciously worked towards diversifying and creating more opportunities for our our aging population on boards and commissions. And I think that the transportation board is one of those boards where they could use that. Now, some of the subcommittees have it, but at the decision making voting board, they don't. Not 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 to the extent that I think they should. It's not going to change my vote tonight, but I do think we need to consider it going forward.
Okay, two things I'd say about that, and that is next meeting, we're going to have Transportation Board or the Chair of the Transportation Board coming before us to discuss related issues. At that point, I think you can raise the issue with respect to the Transportation Board as well as the sort of subboards that are under them. You know, pedestrian advisor committee, bicycle advisor committee. And, you know, that that will be an important conversation to have.
Right, and by the way, that I love the Chair of the Transportation Board is fantastic. So again, this isn't a criticism of anybody's participation, their knowledge, their experience and how they're serving. It's just, I think we need to be conscious of boards that typically don't have openings because the incumbents stay on.
Right.
And you you, we will not diversify if we just have incumbents keeping signing back up.
Okay, I move approval of the candidates, the following candidates to boards and commissions. I'm sorry, I'm going to just read them all. There are not that many. Building Commission, Janet Fireman and Nathan Peck. Age Friendly Cities Committee, Carol Carroll and John Say. Transportation Board, Nancy Moore, Lynn Woolley. Wendy Friedman and Brian Kane. And Preservation Commission, Richard Pansiera. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoye.
Aye.
Michael Sandman.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
David Perelman.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you. You all are reappointed. Not not you, I think they're on Zoom. Okay, next, boards and commissions, interviews of new appointments. Starting off with the Age Friendly Committee, we have two or one candidate, Inga Formanti. Is she in the, okay.
Right there.
Okay, Chad's going to help you out. What are you doing?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, let me sure. Make sure you got. We've got one other wire here. If you want to come around this.
I'm used to.
Yeah.
This is part of.
Yeah. Fire away.
Good evening. So first, I'd just like you to introduce yourself and why you're interested in being on the Age Friendly Cities Committee and some a little bit about your background.
Okay, my name is Inga Formanti. In nineteen sixty nine, I was in Boston. I fell in love with the area and I always wanted to go back, but life didn't do that until January of last year, when I basically parachuted into Brookline and have been happy as clam ever since. And I've been very work oriented all my life for various reasons. And of course, being a retiree, it's like what's going on? I'm no longer useful. And so my desire was to become useful again. So when I was in North Carolina, I worked doing public health related and medical related surveys. And I also was a poll worker for the the county level in North Carolina, working both early voting and the regular election, which meant on some years I worked thirty four days at the polls. And I knew that I wanted to poll work again when I came here. I mean, one of the probably the most important event of my life was working the twenty twenty election, primary and regular election during COVID lockdowns. In a precinct that made the national news because of issues related to the Black Lives Matter sign hanging over the entrance to the polling place. And that was special. And I did make a difference that day. In fact, one of our memories was the guy we busted for trying to vote twice. Felt pretty good. And unfortunately, we couldn't arrest him because we stopped him at the attempted point. And at that point, they were doing the small potatoes of attempts. Although it was a felony to actually vote, but the attempt was not a felony. But he had to go through the line that snaked all the way around the block, having heard us say, you're trying to vote twice, and the word went passed through the line. So he had to walk through the whole of ticked off voters. It's kind of interesting. My work career has been pretty interesting. I started as a librarian and slowly moved into IT and data by way of environmental health and safety and corporate finance at Hewlett Packard. So basically, I can speak to pretty much every issue that came up tonight. I was on a material safety data project and I know about hazard materials. I worked for the American Printing House for the blind and mobility impaired myself, so I can speak on the topic of disability. I do not drive here or because in nineteen sixty nine, I said, I'm never driving in this town. And that was probably the one twenty year old decision I made that was a good one. So I can speak to transportation or lack thereof. I made it to the top of a waiting list for senior housing and discovered that the organization in question didn't understand the HUD rules relating to IRAs and other sources of income and turned around and within a week and a half, I got an apartment for lower rent than forty B in Coolidge Corner. So housing is a big issue for me. Also, I'm one of the Harvard Street regulars because I walk everywhere and I live on Winchester Street near Beacon. And because of my orthopedic issues, I sit on my walker a lot and for some reason, people talk to me. And so I hear a lot more from people other than my social circle, which is primarily senior citizens. And I have learned in just attending the meetings on an unofficial status that the committee itself, a lot of information passes back and forth. But there is not much actual power. And of course, in order to change things, you have to know who the where the power is. And I'm learning that as the committee goes along. And I, as a private citizen, can use my voice and the voices of people who share my opinions to actually influence change elsewhere in the town. And that feels pretty good to me, too. For instance, don't get me started on the sidewalks.
Oh, we won't.
And it was interesting that they passed the MBTA corridor housing. But many of the T stops in Brookline are inaccessible and that housing is for low income people who tend to be elderly, disabled or young families with children in strollers. So that's, that's me. And as John can testify, I do ask questions.
Hey, John?
You set me up and that's, that's good. That's welcome. I just wanted to tell my colleagues that I do have, I've had the distinct pleasure of being on the Council on Aging and the I always get the name of this committee backwards. I don't know why. Age Friendly Cities Committee. And Inga has been attending those meetings and she is everything that you have just experienced and more. She's, she fits right in with Brookline because no sooner did she get, you know, established here as one of our residents that she found things that she needed to point out about the T and she found things she needed to point out about some some of our sidewalks. And and she's very oriented towards the pedestrian experience in town, and that's great. And I think we need that on both of those committees. So she she she's been wonderful, even not as an official member of those committees. But it's great that she's going to become official if we approve her tonight or approve her soon.
Okay, Mike?
I, the comment that you make about the T stops me not being accessible. The MBTA got received the grant through the federal government.
Money.
Right, got them to make the green line stops accessible. Doesn't help with the buses, but the buses are, buses kneel.
Except for the traffic problem. People will park in bus stops.
Oh, yes, they do.
And so the buses cannot pull over to the curb and so the ramp. And so, the buses cannot pull over to the curb, and so the ramp and the lowering aren't necessarily always as useful as they could be. But I know, having spoken to some of the parking people, because they're on the Harvard Street, too, they take particular delight in ticketing.
Yes, yep, yep. I hope they keep it up. But anyway, the T, the green line stops is coming. Hopefully, it'll come in a lifetime, given the speed with which the T operates.
We're talking the T here.
Yeah, right, that's what I say. But the money is there.
Okay, Paul?
Just thank you. Besides the mentioning the T and the sidewalks, is there one other thing that you can tell me that you'd strongly advocate for as part of the committee?
Housing.
Housing.
Because I did the miracle of finding an affordable apartment that's also semi-accessible a week and a half. A lot of people talk to me about housing, and housing is not transparent in this town. Oh, yes, you've got a portal. But that's only for certain categories of housing. The state has another portal, and a lot of senior citizens simply don't do the net. A lot of senior citizens are completely bamboozled by forms, and the information required on forms, financial statements, forms. And really, every piece of housing has the same form, in the sense that they all ask for exactly the same information, which is federally mandated in most cases, or based on federal mandate. But they're all designed differently, and if they had one form and one place, and the data could be sorted by what category of housing, what location, whatever, and have the computer do the work, and not the applicant, life would be so much simpler.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one thing to say, which I suppose is, could be considered hot gossip, but there's currently a low-income building that's coming up with a lottery. There also happens to be a seven-year waitlist for at least one of the categories that that lottery covers. And I know people on the waitlist who are not told about the lottery. I told them. They've applied. But like I say, things are not transparent. The processes are not necessarily good. Nobody's default. An explanation of the school overage kind of covered when a lot of things happen at once. You get a little chaos at the end, but the end users are the ones that suffer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. If you were to be appointed to the Age Friendly Cities Committee, please bring those issues before them, and they either directly or through other organizations in town will make sure that we and other people are aware of this, and hopefully can do something about them. Thank you. We will be making appointments at a later meeting, but we appreciate your interview. Now, I have to admit that I am a little confused because my official agenda is different from the one that I'm using in my notes. So, Tiffany?
Yes.
So we have two other applicants for the Age Friendly Cities Committee, Carol Carroll and John Say. Is that correct?
Sorry. These were reappointments, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so I'm looking at the wrong page. Never mind.
So that is it for Age Friendly Cities Committee.
Okay.
Committee.
Okay, got it, got it, got it. Okay, next, Advisory Council on Public Health. We have Marion Friedman-Gerspahn in the audience. Would you like to come to the podium?
To do, yeah.
Yep.
Run on that one, huh?
Good evening. Introduce yourself to our broad TV audience, and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be a member of the Committee, of the Council.
I'm Marion Friedman-Gerspahn, a town meeting member from Precinct Nine. I was interested, two reasons. One is, I thought it'd be interesting, and two, I thought there was something I could contribute. And that's for you to decide as to who can make the greatest contribution. I spent my career mostly in mental health. I worked for the Department of Mental Health for 25 years or more, actually, some of it part-time. And it was always, I am not a clinician, though, so I want to, I want to spare your time. If you're looking for somebody who can provide clinical input to the committee, I'm not your person. Although I'm a licensed, independent, clinical, social worker, and could bill insurance, I wouldn't go to me, and I wouldn't recommend that you go to me. What I do know is public policy, and that's where I've spent my career. So it's really looking at what policies are meant to do, what the unintended consequences of policies are broadly, making sure that all the constituencies are considered. So, in relation to what I said, I sat in on the Transportation Board the other day. They were talking, it was, an exception for case, the question came up about sidewalks, an area that didn't have sidewalks. I listened to it, but to me, that's a public health issue. If we're talking about everybody giving up their cars and walking and biking, aren't we really saying, do we want them to walk and bike in the street? And this was about handicapped access nominally, but it was much more than that. So that's how I see public health. I see it, I see it as a broad issue. I see it relating to many of the Committees. I had, in my work, I worked with children's mental health, and I interacted a lot with the Department of Public Health. I interacted around early intervention programs, around insurance entitlement. Mental health, child mental health in particular, is a stepchild in state government, certainly. And people don't think about it, and for adults, they think of the movies, The Horrendous Killer, Who's Mentally Ill. And it's hard to get, you know, it's amazing that that stereotype still exists. We have the Rain Man stereotype for autism, and I don't know, psycho for mental health. So it was, as I worked in state government, though, over the years, mental health got to be included more and more. And so I got to be the mental health person on the Disability Commission. I worked with mental health, with public health around entitlements, about supplemental security income, about common health, about insurance programs wrapped around kids. I represented mental health in the Special Ed Advisory Committee, which also becomes a health factor. I have a daughter who's transgender, so I am particularly interested in LGBTQ interest issues. And she works for the federal government. She travels occasionally with the secretary. There are four states now that she can't go to. She was scheduled to go to Mississippi. They came and said, we're not sending you, because you can't go to the toilet in Mississippi without risk of being arrested. So I'm interested in that issue. As I said, I'm interested in the disabled. You can tell by my hair. I'm a senior. Paul Bernard, though, I've been very concerned about parking. And the mobility limited, which, again, relates to public health. I had the, I don't know, opportunity to be with a friend in Annapolis a few days ago, and I was wheeling her wheelchair. Well, you know, I can talk about brick sidewalks, and I understand they're a problem, but it was amazing what we couldn't, you know, where we could go, where we couldn't go. There was a store with, you know, a one-inch curb, where I could probably have gotten the wheelchair over that if they moved the clothing rack. Stores with the one-foot step couldn't do. These are, in terms of, to me, these are public health issues. They're not, the disability issues are public health issues. I guess that's my simple thing on that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions from the flagboard? So, I'll ask a question. I think you've answered my main two questions, but.
Could you talk a little louder, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I always complain that other people don't do this. You answered my main questions, but give me a sense of, you know, what you think are the key issues that are coming up for the Council on Public Health in the next, you know, couple of years.
Unfortunately, I think we really have to, we're going to have to deal with COVID. And I think we're going to have to look at all, how, prepare for communication, but also, I look at it in terms of housing, frankly. So you'll see how my mind works. I look at these things, well, we're going to have public space on the roof. That's going to be, that's going to be the outdoor space. And I'm sitting there saying, well, during extreme COVID, we wouldn't let people gather together, and they could take the elevator one by one. And so what are we really doing for out, is that adequate outdoor space? How are we thinking about our spaces in the sense that it's possible, probably, probable, that there will be another epidemic? I don't know the answers to it, but I think that these are questions that need to be as part of our mind. Obviously, the classics, I mean, food and housing are absolutely critical. I mean, they're, I don't know, they're basics.
Paul? I know we have a lot of interviews, so I'll make this quick. First, thank you for your interest in your application, Marion. And I really like the way that you approached public policy and public health and the intersection between all these different issues. But I do have one that's related to, a question related to Bernard's question in your earlier answer. You know, we, we're starting to see some diseases that we hadn't seen in a long time, and they're starting to pop up again. We recently had whooping cough at the high school. It took a little bit of time to get that message out. And there's, you know, this tension between notifying the public when, and overreacting and creating panic. What's the right balance? When, how many people need to get something or be exposed to it before the public is notified? And what's, what are your thoughts? And I know you're not clinical, but it really is a public policy notification issue.
I think in some ways, I think the notification around whooping cough was excellent, actually. It said, it's beginning. I think everybody needs to know, because there are people who are immunocompromised, who can't take any risk. And they're probably not using public transportation now anyhow because of that. But there are people who, there are people who are temporarily or permanently immunocompromised. So I think notifying people and telling them of the risk, and then if it, should it escalate, going more broadly. I want to point out what you said also. I think we need to think about how we communicate, especially with seniors, and that the internet is not sufficient if we want to reach older seniors, I would say. And various other peoples who don't, who don't use the net, don't use email. I think we've got, this is slightly off, but we did that survey on community health. I don't think there was a paper survey. We missed some of the most vulnerable, vulnerable, vulnerable people by not having a paper survey. It's a pain in the neck, but if that's, you know, if we want to reach those people who aren't connected and find out what their needs are, and they're likely to be greater than those people who are connected, then we need to think about it.
All right, thank you. Any other? Okay, thank you, Marion. And we'll make our appointments at a later point, at a later meeting. Next, Mary Kessler. Is she in the audience?
Yes.
Sorry.
I'm Mary Kellergrew Kessler. I live at 1501 Beacon Street. I'm a longtime Brookline resident, and I've been active for years in town issues, and served on the Transportation Board at one point. And I've been a town, former town meeting member. Just to start with answering why the Advisory Council on Public Health, I believe very strongly that public health is a core function of government. As a matter of fact.
One second. Ladies, would you, ladies, Marion, it's just hard for us to focus on the, thank you.
No, don't. Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's good to see my friend Marion Friedman. I hope she recognizes me, too.
Marion?
No, no.
Order in the court.
Well, ditto, ditto. Anyway, public health is a core function of government. As a matter of fact, communities and town government was started because of people needing to come together to protect the water supply. And I've always found that to be an interesting thought. I'm very strongly committed to improving health equities, maternal and child health particularly, nutrition services and food security, evidence-based program planning and policy development, which includes data gathering, improving communication and public education through the Advisory Council. I really, I believe my background, experience, expertise enables me to make a very real contribution to the Advisory Council in the town of Brookline. I'm going to just mention, I've lived in Brookline for 60 years. And did I say I was proud to be a senior citizen? I am. So in my background, I have really focused a lot on government and economics. As a matter of fact, the reason why I live in Brookline, I chose to live in Brookline as a single person, was because I took a local government course at Simmons College, where I participated and was a volunteer in Louise Castle's initial campaign for selectmen, a select person. It was, she was a select woman, I think that's what we called everybody then. So that I did get my start early in Brookline. But following turns in finance and investment management and volunteering, as I just described, I went back to school and I took my MBA in public, with a focus in public management. After starting in the state government, State Office of Executive Office of Health and Chairman's Services at the State House, I worked in and out of state government as an advocate lobbyist in senior management, before coming to the job where I stayed for 25 years. For 25 years, together with other smaller nutrition activities and programs at the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, I directed the statewide Women, Infants, and Children's Nutrition Program. It is acknowledged to be one of the most effective health and safety net programs in the nation. For those who don't know, just very quickly, WIC is a federal program which provides nutrition education, counseling, and checks for specific nutritious foods to pregnant women, infants under, up to six months, and children under five, who are certified to be at medical or nutritional risk. It's statewide with 35 local programs, probably now over 300 employees, and it is the largest, the largest program in the Department of Public Health, mostly due to the fact that our money, a lot of our money goes to food. And, you know, food is expensive, and we are well-funded for that. Total annual funding is $135 million. We provide nutrition services to, at the time, 135,000 clients a month. So whatever I did as a manager, and I hope that I did, I did a good job, I always made, I just, you know, I always said that a lot of kids were being fed every day, and I was always very proud of that. While I was at WIC, the program more than doubled in funding and number of clients served, attesting to a very strong program and good local program services. I was pleased to lead the development and implementation of WIC management information systems, including a statewide computer system that produces checks for every person in the program, local program performance contracting, infant formula rebate, which is kind of similar to what is going on, I think, with the negotiated drug prices at the federal level now. And that was very early. And that was very early on, and for a small program, actually. I was an initiator of, in the nation, one of the two states that worked and started farmers market nutrition programs. That really was quite a feather in the program's cap. We worked on quality assurance, strategic planning, all of which allowed for more and improved services to greater number of families here in the Commonwealth. And also, we were recognized with national awards and served as a model for improving services in other state programs.
Okay.
Well, I didn't even get to being a legislative chair and president of the National Association.
You've given us a lot, lot to think about. If you, I take it you've attended meetings of the Advisory Council?
A couple of times, yes.
Okay. Paul.
Yeah, so, thank you. So as you were going through all that amazing experience, and by the way, I benefited from WIC when I was younger with my first child. It was a great, very important program in my life. Could you tell me how that experience would apply? How would you apply it to?
Would I apply it? Well, one of the things I'd be very interested in is data collection and gathering and use of that David, data to provide information on building new programs and enhancing current services. I think that's very important. I also would apply the fact that I've done a lot of communicating and how you, how you present things to the public, and, and we need to do a better job on that. I live in a building that a lot of people don't use government services. They don't even know about it. They do know about the library. They all go to the library. But it'd be good for them to know what else is available for them in town, or even just what other people are able to get from town government. I would like them to understand better what, and also what public health does, because it really does a great, it touches all the different things. And coordination also between, which I would have to find out more about. I can't believe that we wouldn't have, that we have siloed government here. I would think there's better coordination now than perhaps there was 20 years ago. But that's the kind of thing I'm mostly interested in.
Thank you.
You mentioned that one of your primary interests is maternal health.
Yes.
Do you explain why that's an interest of yours? Are you seeing certain trends that are concerning to you? Or is it something about your background?
Well, we have, here in Massachusetts, we have an okay infant mortality rate. In other words, babies that don't live more than several months. But there are huge racial disparities in that. We, and the United States as a whole does very poorly in comparison to other nations in terms of maternal health and child services. So that's very important, because that's the beginning, that's the beginning of life. If you, if a child, if a mother can have a good pregnancy, she has better, better pregnancy outcomes, better babies, et cetera. And then if the, the child has food and the right kinds of food for its development, it even does better.
Thank you. And then also, you mentioned data gathering a fair amount. Do you have any specific ideas or resources you want to utilize to improve data gathering?
Well, there's data gathering on the state level, which is, and across New England, which is very well-done. And I think we could pick up some ideas on that. I was very impressed by the survey, though I agree with Marion about a, a paper might be helpful for some people. But it was a good survey, and I was very pleased that, to, to, to answer it and that the town was doing it. And that provides a good basis for developing programs. And I'm sure that's why they, I know that's why they did it.
Okay, thank you. As you know, we will be making our appointments at a later meeting. But I appreciate you coming before us.
Thank you.
In the interview. Thank you.
Oh, Marion's left. Good night.
Good night.
Thanks, Marion.
Okay, and I apologize if I mispronounced the next person. Machiko Minjishi?
Machiko is with us online.
Okay. Good evening. Please introduce yourself. And again, I apologize if I messed up the pronunciation of your name. And tell us a little, why, tell us a little bit about why you're interested in the Advisory Council.
Okay, so first of all, I'm very sorry that I'm not there with you today and then taking this interview remotely. However, I have been interested in public, applying for this public health community since I'm very much interested in supporting young people. And as a mother, too, an adolescent and high schooler, my interest has been particularly in those who are suffering from mental health and behavioral issues. And although Brookline is a very fortunate place, everyone's, it's very safe. And then most of the, you know, high school students are reasonably happy and very, well, very affluent as well. However, it's not that we don't have any problems. And then especially for young people, it is not easy to advocate for themselves or to find good resources. So, and then my background is data science and public health. So through my skills, I was hope, I have hoping to contribute to the community through the data work that might support evidence-based programs and innovations. Not necessarily just for young people, but, you know, data work is really general. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So, any questions? Paul.
Yep, thank you, Bernard. Hello, and thank you for your, your application and for speaking with us. I had two questions. I'm really interested in your data background. That seems to be where you've spent quite a bit of time. Could you speak a little bit about how you could see applying that? And have you either attended any of the meetings? Or have you reached out to any of the board members, the commission members, to talk about how you might, they might be able to leverage some of your data capabilities?
Okay, so, yeah, so I, I'm working as a public health research fellow. And I was thinking of, I, I presume that there might be tons of data that committee may have gathered up till now or currently gathering. So, and then data work is not, it consumes a lot of time. So I was hoping to, well, contribute in, in those works. And so, and then public health, I'm working in a hospital. And I'm always, but in, but many more students and, you know, many more young people, they don't come to the hospital. So I was hoping to help those in the community, not necessarily just those who could come to the hospital. Does it make sense to you?
It does. Thank you. Yes, thank you very much. It was helpful.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. And we'll be making our appointments at a later meeting of the Select Board. Appreciate your coming before us and having this interview. And, and many people interview via Zoom, so don't feel bad about that.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Is Anthony Isak on? I'm sorry.
Yes.
I apologize to you for messing up your names. And I know you, so I don't know what happened there.
That's all right. All is forgiven. So I'm Anthony Isak. Many of you are familiar with me already from some of the policy work I've done and then also because I have been involved with other subcommittees, most notably the Bicycle Advisory Committee. So I'll just speak to you a little bit briefly about my interest in this, but also how I come to this type of thought in terms of thinking of a position, because I think everyone is pretty much aware, at least in your room, of the policy that I've always brought forth, and it's always had a health lens. Whichever Warren articles I've been involved in have all had a health bend to them other than the voting Warren article, which was meant to kind of increase the voice of people. I, I think people have known that usually when I present my Warren article ideas or work with others, that I've tended to work with a broader group of people and try to get departmental support as I go through. It also tends to be a Warren article that usually has involved data to show why it's important in our area. Usually, my first thought process and what I hope to bring to this board is the thought process of how do we leverage our built environment in a way that is sustainable within our town to be able to benefit the most number of people? So thinking about, we do have limited space in terms of what we can do physically, but also we have limited ability in terms of our town resources and how we can leverage that to help with health, but staying within the area of what we can do. One example I can give, actually two, is last year I was in Minneapolis, and I was staying in St. Paul, and I walked by and on the firehouse, they had a small sign that said free blood pressure checks to the community. So I looked all over for the doorbell. Unfortunately, the one bell was actually the buzzer. So I, I pressed this buzzer Sunday evening, and all the fire department came down and let me in. Right away, they're like, what's wrong, what's wrong? And so I explained to them that I'm in St. Paul, I live in Brookline, which is way on the other side of the country. But I saw this sign, and I was curious as to how the fire department got involved in doing blood pressure screenings for the community. And they were fantastic, the six fire people. They sat me down, they explained the process. I said, well, what is it in terms of a burden on you? And they said, it's not a burden. We're here in the community to form these kind of tasks. So I filed it away. I actually put it on the list. And when I came back, I went to two of our firehouses to talk it out with them and, and kind of get some feedback on it. And then I put it on my list to leave for now as I think about it more. People are familiar with, when I bring an idea, thinking that, okay, either he just brings a lot of ideas or that the ideas are like quicker processes just put in place, such as perhaps with a rap infestation war article. But what's missed is a lot of times is I do look at things in terms of how other communities do it and thinking about how it's done here and the time involved. So something like this is bound to take me at least another few months of trying to figure it out. And so those are the experiences I bring, which is the hope that by looking at how our community is able to leverage the resources to be able to fix the built environment to help everyone. So whether it might be the micro-mobility issue when I was involved in like skateboards being illegal for younger kids, to last year with the discussion in Harvard Street and the MBTCA, MBTACD, and my repeated questions about how is it that this would impact like fall risk and would we be able to have elevators and things like that? What I look at when I think about this is, the first starting point is probably to look at not only the Community Engagement Survey, but also the Youth Survey. Most of the other things I've brought about in terms of tobacco-type ideas were meant to help with the youth. And so looking first at what the data shows in our community and where there is a need, but then also listening to what is brought to the, the board and what the board brings up and identifies as a need. That can change month to month and, and year to year. And so there necessitates this flexibility in terms of things I might have seen, but then also what is important for the community. My day job is a pharmacist working in primary care. So oftentimes, the reason I'm involved is because of situations that impact patients that we can't control and address in a clinical visit, whether it's pharmacist, social work, NP, nurse, or physician, but can be designed because of the community in terms of making sure it's healthy for them to exercise, healthy in terms of nutrition. So those are some of my thoughts in terms of the approach to this and summarizing some of the processes I've gone through when I've thought about policy. I've looked at all six people that are interviewing for this. It's phenomenal. I don't, I don't think anyone can go wrong with the various experience that people have brought. And, and I think that's a strength of our town, and I think that's a strength of the pool. So I wish you good luck in choosing whoever that may be, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So have you, I take it you've attended meetings of the Council? What, what is your observation as to, you know, how they function and what, how you would be able to fit into them?
Yeah. So I usually, sorry. I usually look at the agenda and see what are the topics that are relevant. So I've gone to things like when they did have the release of the Community Engagement Survey, and I've gone to ones where they've had outside speakers come to talk about various other topics. What I see is that a lot of the work is done in the background in terms of having to learn about the topics, right? So it might not be a topic that I might be 100% familiar with, but that means that I work in the background to become familiar with that topic. I, I see that they are fairly well-organized from my experience of having presented or reached out to them about various topics over the last four or five years. And I think it's important that, you know, you work within a team. Each person is going to have a little bit different experience based on what they've done in terms of line of work, but also what they do in terms of how they function within our community, whether that's, you know, where they live or where their interest is. So my hope is, is whatever instrument I can bring, that it still kind of works within, you know, the orchestra that they're playing. So making sure that I bring the area, but it fits in, in the teamwork that they already have.
David?
You referenced multiple times limited space as a factor. What specifically are you referring to there? Was that why you mentioned the St. Paul Fire Department example? You're looking to leverage resources in the sense of existing built-in environments and how that could be utilized? Or can you just elaborate?
Yeah, correct. So how the space that we do have can be leveraged? So for example, firehouses, you know, and especially Brookline might look a little bit different, right? So it might be that the firehouse that's closer to Route 9 can provide a little bit more of the service, because people might be a little bit further away from the areas that have these types of things, such as pharmacies that have a blood pressure machine or a nearby clinic. So it's looking at how to leverage that resource potentially. But the same idea with things like parks. How can it be used so that it's a benefit for kids who are younger who are playing, but in the morning, potentially for people who are going to yoga, you know, before work, or older people who want to walk in an environment and they're not having to worry about things like cars and pets or things like that? So it's how to think about the approach of how our city is designed, sorry, town in this case is designed, and how to leverage the resources that are already there, whether it might be the park spaces and town departments, or whether it comes to when we're thinking about like design of buildings, such as the example with the MBTA, where I was really trying to make sure and find out, you know, would we be able to have things like elevators that can help older people and, and people who have limited mobility or people with small kids needing to go, you know, up and down with, with two small kids and you can't leave one?
Okay. Thank you. As I've said before, we will be making appointments to this council, as well as other committees at a future meeting. I appreciate your coming forward for this interview, and thank you.
Okay, well, have a good evening.
Thank you, you too.
Thanks, Evan.
And next, LaShira Nolan. Did I pronounce?
Um, we actually moved LaShira to the 23rd, when we also moved Shear. She volunteered to also move to the 23rd.
Okay. Uh, next, trustees of Walnut Hill Cemetery. And I see we have one interviewee, Thomas Johnson, and he's in the audience. That's next, that's last.
Oh, okay. Well, good evening, and thanks for having me invited as a trust, possible candidate for, as a trustee of Walnut Hills. I currently serve on the board for Massachusetts Cemetery Association for the past 10 years, and currently working at Forest Hills Cemetery as Director of Sales. I've had extensive history with cemeteries. I was at Mount Auburn in Cambridge for 20 years as Sales Manager. And at JCAM Jewish Cemeteries Association of Massachusetts. Covering about a hundred and twenty-five cemeteries throughout the Commonwealth uh as Director of Operations. I also served as the General Manager at Sharon and Noelwood Memorial Park in Canton, Mass. Uh so I have an extensive history with cemeteries. I think Walnut Hills is quite a beautiful place. It's one of one of the Brooklines, one of the few towns that has such a beautiful town cemetery. And it's a great perk for any residents that are here to buy into it as a final resting place. I know cemeteries aren't a favorite favorite topic for anyone, but they are necessary. And hopefully with my expertise, I can help advise the town how to keep sustainability. Uh where the trends are going and help keep the cemetery as an active place for many years to come.
Thank you. Uh you know, at our last meeting, trustee Randall Micklejohn um of the uh Walnut Hill Cemetery. Described the cemetery as the largest and shadiest public open space in Brookline. Which surprised me, but I think more people should know that. That's an important piece of information in terms of its contribution to, you know, climate mitigation. Uh as well as open space for, you know, people walking outdoors. And although we don't want crowds strolling around the cemetery, I was wondering if you had any ideas about things that can be done to make. People more aware of the cemetery, its history, um and the people buried there, as well as um sort of. Making it uh more use, making it user-friendly to to people to enjoy and appreciate.
Well, I have noticed just walking around there myself that I see a lot of people walking their dogs around. It is a beautiful walking area because it is, there are quite a few hills in there, a lot of trees. And I think it's just, it could be a very active place for the living as much it is for the dead. And I think uh being one of the prettiest in the Commonwealth. Brookline's very fortunate and I. I think probably maybe a little bit more of uh knowledge of people, knowing that this is such a beautiful public place. And their own town would be a great benefit.
Um who was first? Mike?
Um so uh first of all, um you have just superb experience. Um it's very, very interesting to hear, very, it's impressive to hear. I'm familiar with JCAM and Sharon. It's a huge facility.
Yes.
Yeah, I have an odd question. I don't know if you can answer it. Uh what I'm concerned about is you're an employee of the cemetery. If you're a trustee, is there any sort of conflict? As an employee, who do you actually, who do you report to? Uh who, you know, who who is your manager?
Oh, sure. At Forest Hills, I I report to the president. I'm the Director of Sales there at Forest Hills.
Forest Hills, okay.
Which which I've been working all in in private cemeteries. This would be my first. Volunteer sort of position within a municipal. And serving on the board in Massachusetts uh for the mass cemetery. Most of the cemeteries are municipal cemeteries. There are only four or five large privates that are on the board. I I mean, as as membership.
Okay, that's, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Okay.
David?
Just have a follow-up question to what Bernard was asking about regarding. Cemeteries as destinations for the living as well. Uh so I will never forget, I was in Santa Tecla, El Salvador. And there, the cemetery is sort of double as park spaces and for nightlife, and I'm not suggesting that we do that here. But in in uh there would be kiosks and people playing and drinking in the works. But in your ample experience with cemeteries, have there been any efforts you undertook that looked at cemeteries as something? Beyond where you bury people and visit loved ones?
Uh Mount Auburn's very active with having outdoor programs, evening program events. Uh Forest Hill has done some, not as much as Mount Auburn. I think they're really the go-to sort of place where they do outdoor movie events in the evening. They have holiday events, illumination events going on, book clubs, all types of programs and educational. Programs as well for planning for end-of-life issues.
Very interesting. Um any other questions? Thank you. Um as as I think you could pick up, we're looking to take advantage of this great resource.
Well, I hope I can be a big help and advise.
Pardon me?
I hope I can be a big help, especially in the advisory capacity.
Right. Good. Well, we will make our uh appointments at a later select board meeting, but thank you for our interviewing and. Thank you for introducing us to your experiences.
Oh, thanks so much. You all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Uh finally, uh final interview is Commission for Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, and we have Andrew Baccere. Is he?
Andrew has actually emailed me moments ago to indicate that he would like to pull his application, so he will not interview tonight.
Okay, thank you. Um okay, well, that's the end of our uh interviews for uh boards and commissions. And uh finally, or the next item. Is a question of appointing seven members to the Fisher Hill Uses Advisory Committee. Those seven people are myself, Bernard Green, Carlos Rojo, Carol Goodman, Marilyn Tressel, Steve Hyken. Steve Sousa and Michael Roper. Um and you know, this is a committee that a number, a couple of years ago, we uh passed the charge. For in nineteen twenty-two, I believe. And you know, because the uh um Fisher Hill area is going to be used by the school department. As space for uh Pierce uh upper school during the construction of the new Pierce. Um there's really no big pressure to uh, you know, get this committee going soon. But what I'd like to do is just begin the process of putting the committee together and getting the members thinking about. You know, the various options for using uh Fisher Hill uh for various town purposes. Uh early on and to make sure that we make the point that uh what we use uh Fisher Hill for. Is going to be decided through this committee and through the uh public open process that we 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 have set up. Uh and and frankly, I just want to make sure that no one thinks that um their favorite project can. Uh be sort of pushed on to Fisher Hill. So I want to make sure that the process that that we set up. You know, gets underway soon, even though it may be a couple of years before we get any real results, but that we're working on it. Uh early on. Mike?
So you're you're suggesting that we can't have automatically a stacked uh swimming pool, ice rink?
Well, if you can figure out how to stack them. And who will pay for it?
I'm I'm disappointed.
All right, Paul.
Uh thanks, Bernard. So I um I guess I I missed. That the charge had already been written because I was I was thinking about that. So maybe that could be shared at a future time.
Was it not in the packet?
Was it in the packet?
Oh, yeah.
I guess I didn't.
I did upload it to the packet today at the request of Bernard.
Okay, I I guess I missed that. It would be great to get an alert when there's new stuff to the packet. I didn't, I didn't realize.
That is always.
I look at the packet on Sundays and then um I, okay. Um my question is about process. Is this uh is this going to be a fully public committee? That's subject to OML? Everything's gonna be, everything's gonna be done. Deliberations will be in public. This is going to be a fully transparent uh committee. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
As everything in this town is.
That's not sure. There's working groups, staff working groups do not typically operate and.
So so this is, you know, this is not going to be a staff working group, although we will have Maria Morelli to uh staff uh the committee for us to help us. Deal with some of the technical issues.
But you answered my questions. I, and it looks like you got a good slate here, so.
Uh so I'd like to, unless there are any other questions, comments? I'd like to move approval of the appointment of um. Thirty-seven members of Fisher Hill West Uses Advisory Committee. Um on favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyak.
Aye.
Michael Sandman.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
David Perelman.
Aye.
And share votes aye. And. Finally, or the final item.
Two more.
Yeah, two more, sorry.
Oh, what what did I miss?
You've got the B I G agreement and then you've got the Fall Town meeting.
Oh, okay, I'm I'm sorry. Fall Town meeting, um was it?
If you use my newsletter, you can just follow along and everything's there. You can.
I I do these notes and and sometimes uh they're not particularly accurate. Okay, memorandum of of understanding, Brookline Interactive Group. Question of approving and authorizing the town administrator to sign a memorandum of understanding between the town. And Brookline Interactive Group regarding support for use of public, educational, and government channels, facilities, programming, and services.
Hi, good evening.
And you're Jessica?
Yeah, I'm Jessica Smizer. I'm the Executive Director of Brookline Interactive, AKA Big.
Well, introduce the MOU and uh some of the issues that uh we should be thinking about.
So this MOU, Charlie and I have been working on it. Um I think it's a little overdue. Um I started working as the Executive Director on May sixth. So this was something I started working on um as soon as I got into the role. And the interim director I've been working on, Heather Hamilton, as you know. Um and we're just hoping to bring this forward. Um it's a standard MOU outlined in the MOU is the. Uh work that we do to represent the town as a community media, the PEG station for Brookline. And also we have an appendix which talks about the specific work that we do to support hybrid meetings, which has been happening since two thousand.
Yes, Dave. Um Mike?
So um. I I read through it and it's indeed uh very much a standard MOU and don't have any questions about that part of things. But the question I do have is, I'm going to give you a little bit of an introduction that you're familiar with, some other people may not be. Brookline Interactive Group has been supported and and is supported in the MOU partly or mostly by uh fees from cable. Uh and of course, cable subscriptions, while the prices go up, the the uh the total fee collections and the amount that we're getting from them. Uh go have been going down because the um the number of customers is is declining as people go to streaming. Uh and um that presents a risk because uh you know, you you need other sources of income. And I know that there was some work done uh by Heather when she was interim director, uh looking at the cost structure. And uh what an appropriate reimbursement rate was uh for big services to the town. And uh I'm in a curious position of wanting to make sure that you are around and charge us enough so that you survive.
Right.
Uh and.
Well, thank you for that.
Well, wait a minute.
Yeah, well, but but let's just think about the consequences of not having because their because their finances are not, you know, aren't sustainable. And so my question is, can you talk a little bit about the sustainability of your finances?
Well, first of all, um you may have noticed that the the expiration date of this MOU may seem kind of short, and it was longer uh before. And one of the things we discussed when working on this MOU was that we should tie it to the new franchise agreements. And so the franchise agreements, I actually have the actual dates here. So we have two franchise agreements in Brookline. Um one is with Comcast and one is with RCN. So the expiration date of Comcast is coming up sooner, and that's in uh April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. And the uh RCN franchise agreement expiration is April twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight. Comcast is by far the larger one. And um so just for background, I was Executive Director of Cambridge Community Television until a couple of months ago before I came over here. And I was involved in the renegotiation of the franchise agreement for Comcast for Cambridge. And what I know is that when we renegotiate the the franchise agreement, some things will change. Including how they structure the income coming from Comcast. So we did want to make sure that the MOU was tied to the franchise agreement renewal. Because things will change in the next franchise agreement related to some of the issues that you're talking about. And also related to how they're structuring the capital funding that comes from Comcast. So we were aware of that and wanted to make sure that we were able to come back and talk about our new MOU. Under the terms of the new franchise agreements rather than have those beat in conflict. Um secondly, uh one of the things that I did at Cambridge and one of the pieces of expertise that I'm bringing to this role. And probably a big part of why I was hired for this role is uh Cambridge had a similar issue as all community media. Stations do with, you know, some kind of existential threat related to revenue. So what I was tasked with in Cambridge is finding alternative and other sources of revenue. And we are a five oh one C three, so and we really have not tapped in any really strong way. What grants and funding are available to us? Um and I was able to do that in Cambridge and I'm confident I'm going to be able to do that here in Brookline. Um also individual donations, community support, as well as revenue generating activities. So things that we can do within the status of five oh one C three, such as professional development, that will bring in earned revenue as well. So this is all going to be part of a strategic plan that I'll be working on with the board. But we're very aware of what we need to do to increase our and diversify our revenue. Um I also do appreciate that you brought up what support the town can bring to big because this was a conversation that I've had. With cities and municipalities as well and the services we provide in this MOU. This forty thousand dollars to support the AV as well as the support that we've been getting in other ways through the town. It's wonderful. Um but we do need to have some talk, some conversations about. What it will look like going forward if there is a substantial decrease in the amount of funding that comes from those franchise agreements.
In Cambridge, what happened with the Comcast? Did the franchise, how did the the change or the renewal of the franchise agreement affect the income?
So the um there was a level funding agreed to by the city um that kept us at a certain level. It wasn't, um what's interesting, the trends in the revenue decrease. Um that we're hearing about, so the, just to, so everybody's aware. The uh franchise agreement payment to community media is tied to individual cable subscriptions. So most um cities and towns are seeing an a decrease in cable subscriptions. It's actually much more substantial in rural areas than it has been in urban areas. Um and in Cambridge, for example, year to year every year was about fifteen percent, which is not really that large, but you might see out in Western Mass like a thirty percent decrease in cable subscriptions. Now, going forward, that may change, but that's what we're looking at. So the main change to the um revenue picture when it came to what happened with the Comcast franchise agreement in Cambridge. Was they did decrease and will probably decrease, but Cambridge is um stepping up with a budget line item. The other thing that happened was the capital um expenses. Were restructured, or sorry, capital revenue was restructured. So Comcast. Um had been giving about eighty-four thousand dollars a year to the community media. They decided to front-load that um so that it was a a larger chunk that decreased much more substantially over. The period of the franchise agreement. So there are a number of things that Comcast is doing in negotiations with all these municipalities. That are sort of changing the revenue picture. Depending on the municipality, of course, the percentage of decrease is going to change city to city, and we just really can't predict what that's going to look like. I mean, right now I pulled some data just to sort of see over the last year what it's looked like. Um and so. If we look at May. Twenty twenty-three. The Comcast income. For that quarter ending in April. That came to big was sixty-eight thousand. Fourteen, sixty-eight thousand fourteen dollars. Um a year later, it's sixty-four thousand four hundred seventeen. So the trend is down about four thousand dollars just in a year. And you know, there's this one expectation that that's going to be increasing.
Um one last question. Is there any way to act to? Twist Comcast's arm into broadening what they pay the their fee ba- the the basis for their fee, that is, they also provide. Internet service even to those of us who have gone to streaming.
Right. Well, what I always say is don't ever use the word cord-cutting or be fooled by the um propaganda. Of saying that people are cutting their cord. They're not cutting their cord. That same cord. That same cord that brings in cable brings in internet. So Comcast, it, they talk about the fact that they are now competing with other types of entertainment, which is true, but most people don't get that entertainment unless they still have that cord, which is usually part of the franchise agreement. There has been conversation among different cities and towns in changing it. It is a agreement that dates back to the eighties, prior to streaming, prior to, you know, the internet as we know it now. It would take a substantial amount of work and, and process to change this agreement, and, and all these companies have a lot of lawyers that are fighting very hard not to change how it's set up. That said, there are, right now in the state legislature here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, there's been a bill being passed through to look at receiving income from streaming services. Those streaming services income would then get distributed to community media as well. Uh, I believe right now it's still a table, but it hasn't died yet. Other states and cities are looking at other types of alternative revenues that would keep community media alive, but those initiatives are not coming from the cable companies. They're happy with the way it is.
I'm sure they are. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
David.
Do you anticipate that you're going to need any other M O Us, such as with the schools, for instance, given that BIG is located at the Unified Arts Building?
You know, it's a good question. I don't know when that M O U expires or how that agreement has set up, been set up with the schools at this point, something I'm going to have to look into.
All right, thank you.
Paul?
Yep, uh, thank you. I'm going to switch gears a little bit. Funding is, is a huge issue, right? And that's, doesn't sound like it's going to be solved overnight, but it's something we're going to help you with. Um, I wanted to talk about the services side, and you're, you're new, you've kind of got, got your feet under you at this point. One, you know, the community, especially during COVID, we couldn't have gotten through it without BIG and the work that BIG did to create accessibility, you know, remote participation. It's been, as you saw, majority of the participation tonight was, was remote. I'm curious about your thoughts on, we've had some bumps in the road recently. Town meeting is an example. Um, I know it's new, hybrid, but it is, it's a bumpy, it's been a bumpy experience. We've had some bumps here for, for the select board. Any, any thoughts at this point as to root cause, hope for the future? Is it resources? Is it technology? Is it the complexity? All of the above, none of the above?
Well, I am new. What I've observed so far, though, it's a little bit of each of those things. We have had some capacity issues with staffing, a combination of things, not enough people, our main technology person having a major health issue, which he had to go on disability, losing some other staff, you know, being without an executive director for eight months and before I came on. So, you know, there's some cap, capacity issues. I think what I've also observed is that there's, there's a sort of interesting and somewhat unique dynamic that I think we could work on in that, so for example, at Town Meeting, we're working with Town I T and our staff, and so making sure that that goes more smoothly. There, there's a lot of people, a lot of cooks in the kitchen.
Yes.
Um, and making sure that the communication is as good as it can be, and I'm not sure, and this is on our side, maybe we haven't always had the best communication in those situations. So we, we can only account for ours and work on that. And then I also think a big piece of it is that we have some expertise in broadcast and cable cast technology, but we're sort of lacking on the I T side, and there is an I T aspect to what we do as well. And so that's something I'm looking at to see if there's a way for us to bring in more I T capabilities to, to address some of the issues, because some of the issues were related specifically to cable cast technology or streaming technology, which, you know, is pretty niche, but some of them were more I T issues, so, um, and I don't know that we really have built up that capacity enough on our side.
Okay.
So those are some of the things I've observed.
Yeah, it does, I, I think when it's going great, it's, no one appreciates it because it's invisible.
Right.
But when something doesn't go right, um, you know, it, it is incredibly disruptive, because you become so dependent upon it, especially at Town Meeting. Town Meeting is where it becomes a, a spotlight gets shined on anything that isn't going great, so.
Yeah, and I, I think that this past Town Meeting was a lot more smooth, and I would welcome any feedback that you, of things that you saw, but I had heard tales of previous Town Meeting, and I was there to observe for this one, this past one, and I think some of those things didn't happen again.
Well, we did, we did have a number of hiccups, but it wasn't as bad as the prior one. We're going in the right direction.
Okay, thank you. But please feel, I mean, this is one of the things too, I really want you to reach out to me and let me know what you need and what you're observing. And I really think if there's a way we're doing it that's not working, we should think of other ways of doing it and work with you in collaboration and in partnership in that way. I, um, I want to make sure that even though we have our own workflow and technological expertise and capacities, that we're actually a learning organization, and we're bringing that learning further out to Town I T, to you. I would love for Town Meeting members to know more about how it all works. I mean, I think that one of the biggest missions in this, in being the community media center is actually educational, to be able to bring learning and bring everybody's voice forward and give everybody the tools and technology to do that. And so if there's anybody who wants to learn more about how this all works, how we make this happen, we're here to, uh, you know, educate as well as do the work.
Uh, any other questions from the board? Charlie, did you want to add anything?
Thanks.
Or was I misreading your chesters?
I was, I was just going to add on the, the prior question that was asked about agreements between the, um, the schools and Brookline Interactive, that there, there has been a license agreement in place for use of the school's space by Brookline Interactive for many years. I don't have the latest renewed version of that, I have the original, but that agreement is referenced in this agreement with, with Brookline Interactive that we have before you tonight. And as well, the hybrid services that we're paying for, the, the $40,000 we're paying in hybrid services also includes the E V support that Brookline Interactive is providing for the school committee. I just wanted to add that in there and throw out a thanks to the Brookline Interactive folk who helped work on this agreement. It's been a long time coming, and it's great to see it hopefully reaching the finish line.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, I'd like to move approval of, um, um, the memorandum of agreement with Brookline Interactive Group and authorize the town administrator, Chad, to sign a memorandum, sign the memorandum of understanding regarding support for the use of public educational and government channels, facilities, programming and services. I think that's the correct way of articulating it. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyac?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Perelman?
Aye.
And share votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you, I look forward to working with you in the future.
And, and we appreciate working with B I G. Okay, and this is the final item.
Yes.
Unless someone wants to make a public comment afterwards. Oh, you do?
I do have a public comment, can I say it before she starts?
Sure.
So, Melissa, I, we see Melissa's face at this time regularly. She stays late for these meetings. And often, it's for things like this, these, you know, the warrant or the housekeeping stuff. I just would like to say that I'm committed for the next time that we have to approve a Town Meeting schedule for the spring Town Meeting, that I'm going to advocate that you get heard first, so that you could be home and in bed by.
But she, she lives for the advisory committee meeting.
Yes. She's juggling both committees.
Yes.
Yeah, I had advisory earlier down here.
She's slave.
And how she does it, no one knows.
It always seems like we have these things, and you're the last on.
Well, I, I would prefer to, you know, I, I am here till the end always, so it doesn't really make a difference to me, so.
All right, then I, then I rescind it.
But we are here to set the schedule for Town Meeting, and so you have the, in your packet, the draft schedule for Town Meeting. So based on a proposed date of November 19th, that means that we count 75 days back, and we are looking to open the warrant on August 8th and then close the warrant on September 5th, which is a Thursday, and the warrant will be closed on noon on the 5th. So you've got the schedule before you, and so, you know, just if there's any questions, we did run this by Michael Borstein, who I always check this for religious holidays, and Lloyd Gellino as well, and so no conflicts were kind of raised in terms of the, the meeting schedule, so.
Okay, um, and religious holidays includes all religions?
Yes, yes. Michael, um, there are a lot of Jewish holidays in the, in the fall, so Michael really does be some good guidance, but Lloyd covers everything else, so.
Um, any questions, uh, from the select board? Seeing none, let's vote approval. I'm over approval of the special Town Meetings, excuse me, schedule, setting the date for the 2024 Special Town Meeting to be held November 9, 2024.
19th, sorry. There was a typo in the first agenda, so 19th.
To be held starting?
I don't think you want to meet on a Saturday.
Okay. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyac?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Perelman?
Aye.
And share votes aye.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, Melissa, appreciate your willing, willingness to stay late and everything else you do. Any other questions or comments from the select board from the audience? And I see no hands raised.
Just a reminder that we're not meeting next week.
Oh, thank you, yes. Next week, we will not be meeting, our next meeting will be July 23rd, and the following meeting on July 30th is also not being held. Our next meeting after the 23rd will be August 6th. Thank you, and that ends our meeting.
All right.
Oh, we very soon.